Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 1st, 2022 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present tonight. Our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the May 4th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Does everybody have a chance to review those? And did we have any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to our public hearings tonight, and we have seven public hearings this evening. Our first one is a zoning ordinance amendment regarding amendments to Section 2, Section 9, Chart 1, and Chart 4 pertaining to uses permitted. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Ms. Rush, good evening.
Good evening, Commission. Good to see everybody. The city's planning department is proposing an amendment to the zoning ordinance to complete a text change. It would be for changes to Chart 1, as well as ancillary sections in Section 9, which is the standards for special use permit, and also to Chart 4, which is the required off-street parking and queuing spaces by use. The purpose of the amendment is to clarify several of the uses and to address any gaps regarding any issues of some of the zoning districts, and to remove and combine some of the land uses that it would be more relevant for our current planning practices. For Chart 1, this was included in the attachments to the staff report. It was a complete list of the changes suggested. The new additions are in the red X or an S, and then the deletions that are recommended are with the highlighted darker yellow. The light-yellow sections that are highlighted is a zoning text change that's already in process that relates to distilleries and breweries and such. A summary of the key changes proposed to Chart 1 includes adding medical, dental, office, or clinic as a permitted use in all of the commercial, mixed-use, industrial, and medical zoning districts. This is not a use that's currently listed. We've always addressed these under office. I know that one's not mine. Another new use that staff is proposing is the payday loan, title loan, and check cash and service business. This is something that's somewhat recent in the last decade or two, and was not included in our Chart 1. We've always addressed those under financial institutions, whereas financial institutions are more of an office type of use, like a mortgage company or insurance company. And then the last one that is kind of a new one is the plasma donation center as a use, and that would be permitted in the commercial, medical, and industrial zoning districts. Changes to Chart 1 for existing uses that are already there include hospital. We are recommending that that get added as a use into the CH Highway Commercial Zoning District. It's already permitted in the medical office and office general and mixed-use and industrial zones. We feel that this is an appropriate zoning district for this type of use as well. Customary, general farming, this is something that happens on a lot of vacant land. Sometimes it's inside the city, sometimes it's outside the city. For properties that are annexed and then don't develop for a period of time, may continue to farm. And so this would allow it to happen in any of the zoning districts permitted by right. And then campground, travel, trailer park is a use that's listed as permitted by right in the CH Light Industrial, General Industrial, and Heavy Industrial Zoning Districts. And staff's recommending that a special use permit be required for this rather than permitted as right, so that you can look at each property on its basis, on its face value, to see if that is a use that would be consistent and compatible with that neighborhood. There are also a few uses that staff's proposing to delete, and includes fish hatchery, petroleum refining, contractor storage yards and wrecking yards out of the CBD, which is a business district on the CH zoning district, and it would remain as a permitted use in all three of the industrial districts. And then there's a list of uses that we are proposing to still stay in the use chart, but combine them with what's already listed, so you don't have so many lines. So pharmacy and apothecary are the same. Bank, main office is going to be linked with banks. Dry cleaning pickup will be with dry cleaning, et cetera. So that list is included in the Chart 1. There will also be associated changes to the end notes in Chart 1 as relates to motor vehicle rentals. Right now, what we have listed and what we've addressed has been motor vehicle sales, but we often get requests from Hertz or Enterprise or other types of companies that do rentals, and we don't have that as a use that's listed. So we feel that we can combine that because it's very similar in nature in terms of how it operates, cars on the parking lot, deliveries, and customers coming to and from. The next one would be to note number one regarding accessory dwelling units to be included in the CM, CMR, and CMRS 8 zones, which is consistent with Chart 1. So in addition to the Chart 1 changes, Section 9 is also lists out specific standards for special use permits. And in that section, motor vehicle sales lists out all the requirements, and so we're suggesting that a text amendment to that one to add the automobile rentals into that section as well. And then lastly, Chart 4, which is the parking chart, would be to add these new uses so that there's a parking calculation that's associated with those, and that public assembly and group assembly match the language that's in Chart 1. So with that being said, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the zoning ordinance amendment for these text changes for the following reasons: that the purpose of the amendment is to clarify several of the uses, address any gaps regarding uses in some of the zoning districts, and to remove or combine some of the land uses to be more relevant for the current zoning practices. Secondly, the proposed zoning text amendment will minimize confusion by eliminating inconsistencies and out-of-date uses, thus improving customer service. And thirdly, the proposed zoning text amendment will maintain consistency with the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and will not conflict with any state or federal laws. So we are asking that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing on this matter and discuss it and make a recommendation to the city council. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions from the Commission, or if the public has any.
Any questions for Ms. Rush before we open the public hearing? Okay.
Thank you.
We will open the public hearing for this matter, and I'll go ahead and state for the public hearings tonight, and this will apply to any of them, if you're here to speak on any of these items tonight. Anytime we open a public hearing, you will come forward to the podium, state your name and your address, and then you will have three minutes to make your comments to the Planning Commission regarding the item you're here to speak about. If you are the president of an association or a group, then you have up to five minutes to make your comments. So with that being said, there's no questions, we will open the public hearing for this first item. And this is just regarding our zoning ordinance amendment that I bet a lot of you are here to speak about. Anyone? Okay. All right, then we will close the public hearing and ask if there are any other questions or comments from the Planning Commission on this item, until they've done a lot of work and a lot of cleanup on here. Yes, Mr. Lain?
On the Chart 1, on the new uses, I guess, just no other way to really say this, but just want to make sure, the, you know, medical or clinic use to me seems that that would be pretty broad, and just want to make sure we've kind of thought through whether something might be, you know, deemed medical or clinic that might not necessarily be a very functional or appropriate zoning next to some of these other, like a mixed-use which may have residential, potentially even other types of commercial.
I think the intent was for it to be medical office, urgent care clinics, dental office. So I'm going to take a quick look at the text to see.
Because it says dental office, it says medical, dental office, or clinic.
I think the intention was for office. You agree?
Yeah, right now, we don't even have anything in our Chart 1 regarding a doctor's office or a dentist's office or a medical clinic. And right now, we default to the generic office anytime there's a medical clinic or a medical office. And so what we were trying to do was to specify that because, you know, without being told by, you know, someone who has worked here for a long time that it falls into the office category, it's always a source of confusion for people to say, you know, where is my doctor's office allowed to be located? Like, well, it's under office. So we're trying to make it more specific and more user-friendly. But I understand what you're saying. Is there a distinction between a medical office and a medical clinic? I think that's what you're, what you're...
It's part of, I guess, what's, yeah, part of what's sort of swimming around up here.
So could we add office after each one?
Well, I think, are you thinking that a medical clinic would be a more intense use than a, than a medical office?
Yes. And might come with different types of traffic. I mean, I guess, different types of foot traffic and traffic, some different types of clinics, medical clinics, and whether or not that's right next to a apartment that's within a mixed-use.
Or a daycare.
Or a daycare, whatever, you know, I mean, something like that. I just, I just don't want, you know, I get what you're saying. I guess what I'm trying to make sure is that we don't, we're not opening a door that is so broad and vague that it doesn't, that it, you know, opens it wider than maybe we want it to.
You know, just my own personal observation is that medical clinics and medical offices are almost interchangeable these days, and that, you know, many times people will seek out an urgent care clinic as in lieu of having a, an actual physician that they go to for years and years. And so I guess that was our thought process in that they're, you know, just based on our observation, it's, they're fairly interchangeable. But if there are types of medical clinics that we need to specify, or if we need to get more specific, we're happy to look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem, you know, medical office, first of all, it just says medical. It doesn't say medical office. So a medical building, to me, could mean a lot of different things. So I looked at that. And then, of course, the clinic, it means a lot of different things, too. I guess that's just where my brain went on this, is that just means a lot. And whether or not we want to include that in all of these districts right here, just, I guess, made me second-guess it a little bit, is all. And for some reason, I mean, I don't, we may have done some work on this before, but I feel like this is the very first time I've seen this. I apologize if, I mean, or at least I haven't talked to anybody at any, to any degree of detail on this at all until right this second. So I'm sorry if I'm throwing wrenches.
Well, we would have just reviewed that we were going to have this public hearing. We reviewed it when we said it for a public hearing is all.
Yeah, okay.
So no, we haven't had a major discussion on it. But I think, I don't even, medical office or clinic, dental office or clinic, and again, do they go in all of those, I think, is the question. Do they go in the mixed-use? Do they go in the, I don't know.
Yeah, could be.
And maybe are you also looking for a more specific definition of what classifies as a medical office? Because there's a lot of things that people call medical offices that maybe we don't want next to...
Does a chiropractic office fall under a medical office? Does pain management company fall under a medical office?
Botox.
Botox. What all falls under medical office?
Not that I can relate, for the record.
Which one? I don't know.
That was good. That was good.
So where does that leave us?
Marty, can we just, maybe that one, we do a little more work on, and is it possible to approve? Or do y'all want to just work on that a little bit?
Just looked at Greg, and Planning Director's nodding yes. We can, we can extract this from the Chart 1 at this time. We'll probably be doing this on a more regular basis because all the planners, new and old, we make a running list of things that we come across that needs updating, and so we can do some more work on it and bring it back in the next time.
And if you'd like, what we could do now, in order to keep this moving forward, we could just take the word clinic out of the, you know, because right now, we're kind of winging it as it is anytime we get in any kind of medical use because it's not specified in Chart 1, or doctor's offices or dentist's offices aren't specified under Chart 1. So I think even just getting the, getting it called out as a medical or dental office would be a win because it would be more specific than what we have right now.
I think, I feel like I'd be comfortable if it said medical office and dental office to be permitted within those. I don't think I would even, it would have never, I'd have never budge.
Yeah, I think the clinic was really for urgent care clinic, because I know this was one that we had brought up.
Yeah, and, you know, I'd...
Just add the verbiage urgent care clinic, and that clears that part up.
Because those are pretty low.
Yep.
Traffic.
We can, we can examine that, and if the Planning Commission is comfortable with us continuing to work on that between now and council, we can, we can try to, I think we hear what you're saying, and we can, we can try to tweak that to get it to where you'd be comfortable with it.
Y'all good with that?
If there's no more questions, then I'll go ahead and move for an approval on this with pulling out the, the first item here, the medical, dental, or, sorry, hold on a second. Do you want us to leave, do you want to go to work on it, or do you want to leave the office part in there?
I think...
I think we're comfortable leaving the office part in there.
With some tweaks.
And then you continue to work on the whole clinic thing.
Yes.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve this with the deletion of clinic and the addition of office to medical. So it's medical office and dental office in that first item under Chart 1 new uses. Clear enough? David, you, all right, so I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Second.
And do I need to say subject to all staff comments, too?
Yep, we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Our next item, Item B, is a zoning application for approximately 1.5 acres located at 915 Haynes Drive to be rezoned from RS15 to PRD. Beaumont is the development, and Blue Sky Construction is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Planning Commission members. Our second public hearing this evening is for you to consider an application that our office has received for a zoning map amendment for two parcels located south of Haynes Drive. You can see them on the map, shaded in the green color on the screen. These properties total 1.45 acres, or approximately 1.5 acres, and currently have existing structures on them. They are zoned RS15, which is single-family residential district. The entire surrounding properties are all zoned RS15 as well for quite some time, and so those are a minimum lot size of 15,000 square foot, single-family detached homes. The applicants are proposing for you to consider a rezoning to PRD Planned Residential District. As such, they've provided a program book that details the proposed development for these properties. These two properties are proposed to have eight single-family detached homes on them with a density of 5.5 dwelling units per acre. They are not proposed to have individual lots of record like you typically see in single-family detached developments. They're, I think, going to be sold horizontal property regime, so that you purchase the property, or you purchase the house and the property is common area. The, the plan has four of the homes fronting along Haynes Drive, and four of the homes along the rear property line with the center of the development serving as the open space and drainage area. The PRD does propose to reduce the minimum building setback lines for the sides and rear, not for the front property line. So in the RS15 district, there is a minimum setback of 40 feet. And so staff did speak with the applicants and asked them to look at the right-of-way of Haynes Drive, because Haynes Drive is identified with a major transportation plan as a, an improvement, I believe it's a short-term improvement, STI 3, to be upgraded to a three-lane curb gutter section with sidewalks. And so what we know is any development that is adjacent to something on the major transportation plan, they do have to participate in those improvements when development occurs. But also, we wanted to ensure that there is adequate right-of-way along the property. And so we asked them to look at the, have their engineer look at the survey and see what the right-of-way is to make sure that there is the 60-foot minimum there. And so wherever that right-of-way line will be, the homes will be set back 40 feet. I believe during the workshop for this item, some Planning Commission members were curious as to the adjacent structures. The map that I have up now is an ortho map, so it shows just a once-a-year photograph from the sky. And the house here is approximately 27 feet from the property line to the porch, 35 feet to the front of the house. And then the large yellow house I think we're familiar with at 903 here, looks like it's probably around 80 feet from the property line. So that gives you an idea of the setback of the two adjacent, two adjacent properties. As you know, in the planned development process, the plan can be, not only does it make minimum commitments on behalf of the developer, but it also allows them an opportunity to seek exceptions from our development standards, zoning standards that would otherwise apply. The program book identifies three exceptions. However, staff has identified a need for four. One, of course, is the setbacks. They're proposing for the side of the homes at the closest point to be eight feet from the side property line. And so if it were zoned RS15, the setback would be 12 and 1/2 feet. So you can see that's a reduction. Another of the exceptions is for the rear setback. In an RS15 district, which is what the surrounding properties are, you would normally need to have your building setback 30 feet from the property line, and they're requesting a 20-foot setback. The setbacks are an important distinction, which I know that Planning Commission's aware, so maybe this is more benefit for interested property owners. But setback lines apply to the principal structures. They do not apply to fences, walls, hedges, parking and loading, statues, arbors, trellises, barbecue stoves, awnings or canopies, recreational equipment, terraces, uncovered decks, and windows, porches, or balconies that project no more than 60 inches. So those elements that I just mentioned can be within that minimum building setback line because those are for structures. Accessory structures typically have a five-foot setback, but they vary. One of the items that I asked the design team to work on are the fact, or the guest parking that they're providing onsite. And so they have some spaces, additional parking spaces, that are oriented so the headlights shine into the property owners, the next-door property owners. And so, single-family homes, of course, do not require buffers between single-family homes. But seeing that they've got some parking spaces that will shine right in other people's backyards, I asked them to look at treatments there because we didn't want to reduce the quality of life for either people who live there now or may live there in the future to have headlights shining into people's houses or backyards. And so the team will speak to that in just a moment. So two of the exceptions I mentioned were to the minimum setback line for the sides and the rear. Another one is to increase the maximum gross density to 5.5 dwelling units per acre. That's higher than is allowed in the RS15. And then the fourth exception that staff identified that's not in the program book is exceptions to the required parking for single-family detached dwellings. And so our zoning ordinance requires four parking spaces for each single-family detached dwelling. The way these are designed, they're designed for two parking spaces outside of the house, and they're asking for parking spaces within the garages to count for two of the parking spaces. The zoning ordinance is very specific that those four spaces are outside the garage for single-family detached homes. You may recall that recently we've changed language in the zoning ordinance for townhomes and apartments, that they can count garages so long as they have restrictions that didn't apply to single-family detached. But they can do that with a planned development if it's approved as part of this process. So the other exception that's not in the program book that we wanted to make you aware of is the fact that you are required four parking spaces outside the garage. So they're proposing two outside the garage and two within the garage. To compensate, they're also providing those additional parking spaces that I talked about being oriented toward the adjacent property lines. The, the property is identified on our future land use map, and it does recommend suburban residential character as the most appropriate character for development of this property. Typically, what you would see is an RS10, RS12, or RS15-style development that would be consistent with a suburban, suburban character. What's proposed are single-family detached in that development type is consistent with suburban residential. However, the, the lots, of course, aren't. The characteristics do state that development options can be established which allow for smaller lot sizes in exchange for greater open space, with the additional open space devoted to maintaining the suburban character and buffering adjacent properties and roads, as well as enhancing onsite amenities. So you don't strictly have to have RS10, RS12, or RS15 lots. You can have smaller lots, but essentially saying maybe you have some addition, you cluster the development or have some additional open space or buffering. And then the typical densities in the suburban residential character range from one dwelling unit per acre to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. This plan proposes 5.5. So the development type of single-family detached is consistent with the suburban residential character. However, the dens- However, the density of 5.5 dwelling units per acre and the layout with the open space in the middle instead of on the outside of the plans doesn't really fit within the characteristics identified in that suburban residential character. So staff would recommend that you consider those items when you formulate your recommendation regarding this PRD request this evening. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them. I do know that the applicants have prepared a presentation and would like to give you some additional information, I think, on the, the design of the site. Before they do, do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, I've got one question. The neighborhood directly to the south of this property, those look smaller than RS-15. How big are those lots?
They're smaller. Back in the 80s, the city of Murfreesboro had a cluster development zoning and I don't remember the abbreviation for it. It wasn't very effective, it didn't work very well, and so we got rid of that next to other zoning ordinance. I may be the only person in this room who even knows about it. Matthew might know. Okay, Matthew and I are the only two people who even know existed. That's Victoria Park. And you can see, maybe they've got some kind of odd common areas that wraps the entire development. And so the idea was they were pushing small lots into the side and supposed to have open space around, surrounding it. This development, and there's one off Hostel Pike that has a similar type development, but those are the only two that I can think of in the city of Murfreesboro that implemented that strategy. Didn't work very well, so we moved away from that. Although cluster developments in the planning world do work, just the ones that we had didn't.
River Bend 5.
Oh, River Bend 5.
Can you-
It's a PRD. No, it's not. Okay.
Matthew, can you use your measuring tool and just measure a random lot and just see how many square foot it is?
It's 1.78 for eight lots, or 1.72 for eight lots. For all eight of those lots.
That right there is?
Yeah, that's 1.72 acres.
Thanks.
Quarter of an acre?
Yeah, 'cause we had the same logic. What is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, .2.
He just looked at it and like 1.72.
That was a really random number for you.
So the one that is, uh, just to the, just below the green property that is kind of below and to the right, halfway, below and halfway.
Gotcha.
Uh, yes, yes, that one is approximately 7,800 square feet.
So .18 acres.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
They average, they average two tenths of an acre.
Yeah, and that's what these are.
So that's the same?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Ms. Green before we hear from the developer? Okay.
I think the most impressive thing about tonight is that all these people chose to come to a public hearing instead of going to see Top Gun.
Went last night. It's fantastic.
I heard it was good. So is this not going to show up on that screen? I guess not.
It will.
Okay. So I'm Benny Pandorf with Huddleston Steel. I represent Blue Sky Construction, which is the developer on the project, and just gonna show you just a, a quick, there it is. So that's a rendering of what the development looks like. In a nutshell, it's a New Orleans-style, kind of a timeless look. As Margaret Ann said, it's, uh, there's eight, eight townhomes total, four of them facing Haynes and four, I guess, in the back of the property. So that's a rendering also of the, a little bit more of a bird's eye, I guess, view of it. As she said, it's two lots, it's 909 and 915, or the address is on Haynes. I'm gonna go past some of these, get to the meat a little bit here. There's just some photos, existing photos of the area general, looks down, down different roads and kind of housing styles of, you know, around the properties, adjacent, adjacent Okay, so here's the concept plan. So, um, these four houses are facing Haynes Drive with the garages in an alley style, which would be in the back. So you won't see a garage from Haynes Drive. Those are house, those are what we're calling house style one and two, which I'll get to in a minute, the elevations of what those look like. And then the four at the back, which do have a front garage, but of course you won't see them from any external roads, they're just kind of within the development. Those are houses three and four is how they're numbered, so. So there's formal open space in the middle, just a gathering area with a fire pit, et cetera, mail kiosk, just some common area that the, that the HOA, the owners will maintain. So house one, again, it's a New Orleans-style, gas lamps, operable shutters, asphalt roof, hardy board siding. Has several balconies on this, in this house style. That's another look at it from all angles, from front, rear and both sides. And again, house one and house two are what face Haynes, so, again, you're not going to see a garage in these elevations because it's in the back. House two, very similar in style, again, all the same features, the lap, the fiber cement siding, the gas lamps, operable shutters, elevation of that from all angles. So now house three, you can see there's a, again, this is facing the interior of the development, but you'll see there's a decorative garage door now, so it's a little different in look, but still the same basic style, the New Orleans-style again. There's all the angles of house three. House four. Again, this one faces the interior, so you'll see there's a direct, a decorative garage there and all the same elements of the other houses. So again, eight townhomes total, four different styles. It's the elevations of house four. So again, similar to what we just looked at, this formal, this green space in the center, it's amenity space, fire pit and a pergola, just a nice gathering area. The price point of these homes will be, they'll drive property values of adjacent properties up, basically, because the builders really does some nice quality, very attractive homes. So here's the landscape plan. So you've got Victoria Park behind here, this is Haynes Drive. So there's a, kind of a row of shrubs all the way around. There's already an entire row of existing vegetation and trees right here that are, that's a neutral zone, I'd call it, between this development and Victoria Park. So in addition to that, we're still doing this, it's like a type A sort of buffer around the whole three sides of the property, and then more of a street tree facing Haynes with some, just general foundation landscaping in the front of these homes facing Haynes as well and around the sides. And some different shades, trees, kind of almost creating a mini park-like, you know, a mini park-like appearance kind of in the center. What Margaret Ann brought up about these parking areas is, we will look at this, this shrub row, this type A buffer and see if, if there's a need to maybe shore that up a little bit for just where those cars would park with the headlights facing the adjacent properties for night, for nighttime.
Can I ask you a question real quick back on that last slide? Is there gonna be a, is it a one-way around that loop, or is it two-way traffic in and out of there, on both directions? So if you come in from the road, you could either make a right or a left?
It's a regular width, it's two-way, yeah.
Well, and so just in, regarding that while we're there, for example, a fire truck when it comes in, if, if you needed a fire truck there, what would be the normal, I mean, even in a regular house, what's, do they stop on the street or are they gonna pull into that center drive if it's a house on the back? How, how's that gonna work?
I would think a fire truck would drive in, into the, right into the subdivision in front of a house. Margaret Ann, did you have a different take on that?
Yeah. I thought maybe they would know, so it's, fire department responds more to medical calls than fire calls, and so there will be at some point here a call to 911. Fire department usually always beat every other, every other helper there. And so they, they do stop on the street if they don't think they can make it around the site. This site, I did ask them early on to evaluate whether it could receive city solid waste services.
Mm-hmm.
And it cannot based on the, the-
Circumference.
The, the way it's designed, so they'll use a private hauler.
Okay.
I, I think I would stretch to say that if a garbage truck can't make it, probably a fire truck couldn't either.
No.
And so that's what I would think, but I, it's not-
So they're stopping on the street mainly for the medical calls and I guess if they had a fi, actual fire call, they would at least pull in on the center drive and-
They could, yeah.
Access the backs, the back houses? Okay.
So that's, that's really the presentation. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I've, I've got a question. Is the developer willing to put any kind of rental restrictions on this complex, whether it be a homestead restriction where you have to live in it for two or three years before you can rent it out yourself? No court, no sale into corporate entities or anything like that?
The developers here, would you like to speak to that?
I hadn't thought that through, but I don't see that this would be a rental property.
Mr. Wilson, would you like to come to the podium? Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Alright.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you all, Madam Chairman. I don't know that, I guess I'm trying to feel for, what's the reasoning behind that? What, that you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to restrict the owner's rights? I'm sort of a property rights guy myself.
I like property rights, but we're getting to where we have more rental doors than property doors, so I want to try to promote homeownership.
Right. I, I agree. I, I can't tell you what somebody that would buy this would want to do with it, but you're looking for a restriction that would keep them from doing that for at least two years?
That's what several neighborhoods have passed it in towns. It's, some do two, some do three.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem in, in doing it for two years, but I wouldn't want to go any longer than that.
Awesome, thank you.
We're mainly looking, you know, these, we've got a lot of people that come in and buy up a whole development and just turn it into a rental right off the bat. This would be a nice development, somebody would want to do that. That's what we're trying to prevent.
Certainly, and that's not my intention. My intention is to sell to individual homeowners.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the developer or Ms. Green before we open the public hearing?
Ms. Green talked about the restriction or restrictive cabinets associated with not being able to use the garage as storage. I'm assuming you're okay with that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Only for cars.
Okay. Alright, well, we will open the public hearing then for this item. We will ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. And one thing I didn't mention in the last public hearing, we did not have a developer, so to speak, for the ordinance change. We would ask that you make any and all comments directly to the planning commission. Do not make them directly to the developer. Also, any questions that you have, we'll make a list of all the questions that you have and at the end of the public hearing, we'll attempt or probably have staff help us attempt to answer as many of the questions as possible. So with that being said, again, we'll open the public hearing, ask anybody that would like to speak to come forward and please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Reed, 2643 James Edmund Court in Jamison Place, which is directly across Haynes from the subject property. I'm here tonight to ask that the commission deny the application in its current form. I am grateful to live in a growing and vibrant city and I believe that responsible growth is an important factor in continuing to move Murfreesboro forward. However, this proposed development to me does not meet that definition of responsible growth. The subject property is surrounded by many well-established neighborhoods with RS-15 zoning. If we were talking about putting this level of density in a newly developing part of town, the conversation would be different, but we're not. Development of this density doesn't fit with the area and the exceptions the applicant is requesting do not respect the surrounding neighbors. I'm also concerned about the level of traffic that this would add to an already congested portion of Haynes. Now, for years, we asked for the traffic light at Haynes and Sulfur Springs and I am grateful for it, but with that said, this stretch of road does have significant backups, especially during peak travel periods, and adding another eight homes with guests right in this busy stretch is just gonna exacerbate the problem. I would ask that the applicant look to mirror a similar redevelopment close by on Sulfur Springs where we had two lots that were recently divided into three by the developer. The, the development there respects the RS-15 zoning of their surrounding area and also the, the design of the houses match the surrounding area as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming out.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Wright and I live at 2709 Jim Houston Court. I am also in the Jamison Place subdivision across from the subject property. I think PRD in this case is being used to make this density sound more palatable, but it, it is really too dense and I think that it, it's not fair to the neighbors to have eight more houses of traffic dump out onto Haynes Drive that close to the traffic light. The traffic there is busy all the time, not just peak times, and if they want to come out and turn left to go towards Thompson Lane, it's gonna be dangerous unless it's just completely clear, and that's not normal. Usually, there's a lot of traffic. I even have to go through regency sometimes to turn left onto Haynes Drive because it's just so congested there near the traffic light. I feel like I had the same questions about the emergency vehicles. Hearing Margaret Ann say that their solid waste could not pick up there made sense to me. It looks very tight. Planning Commission had started denying small cul-de-sacs for the same reason, those vehicles cannot turn and pick up trash and, and if the fire truck has to go in there, I'm not sure what they would do other than park before the center amenity and then have to back out onto Haynes. The little mini park is very small. It's, it's a little bit of grass, so I'm not really sure that's a mini park, but it, it does add to the tightness of that, of that turn for emergency vehicles. I appreciate the question about having this, some kind of rental moratorium. I can tell you, if college students live there, more than a couple, they're gonna be parking however and wherever they can, including the guest parking. We've had that in our subdivision. One of the corporate businesses bought a house in our subdivision and college students were parking in the grass. They were many more than what a normal family would be, plus the garage. It was, it was really bad. And they did get evicted eventually, so I- And they did get evicted eventually, so I appreciate that corporate owner being a good neighbor in that case. But this is, this is just, to me, a recipe for a problem, and I would appreciate you considering changing it or denying it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Who else would like to speak tonight? You want? Okay. And we will close the public hearing on this item. And ask for questions and comments from the planning commission and addressing some of the questions. Traffic is one of the things that was mentioned, and of course, we all know Haynes Drive is quite busy, so is there any-
Yeah, I would just-
Look at the traffic counts or anything?
Yeah, we've looked at the traffic counts. I would submit that eight homes is not that many. It's, it's gonna be similar to people pulling out of their driveway on a rush hour, really. I mean, everyone would have to be leaving at exactly, exactly the same time, so it's not gonna add that much traffic to Haynes Drive, like a, a large subdivision would add.
I'll go ahead and get, get this kind of out as far as the things that, I mean, I think the emergency vehicle situation is, is a-
Concern.
More than a concern. I mean, we just, to me, there's no way I can vote for it until I know for certain, you know, how the fire department feels about this, whether or not that's something that they think's workable. I mean, I, I, I can tell you what I can see happening here all day long, if I think I know what they would say, is they're gonna pull in that first turn in, and then they're gonna get stuck. And then it's becoming, gonna become a big mess. And so I, I got a sneaky suspicion that, that they're gonna tell us they probably don't like the idea that you can't get around this. So, I mean, to me, that's just a, kind of a non-starter, just the way this thing's set up. You know, the, the other things that I kind of would mention as concerns to me are, you know, not necessarily in order, but just that wall of trees that we're gonna wall off these houses next, next door, you know, from having any kind of a view out their yard, because they sit back so much farther. I mean, that house being 90 feet off the road there is now gonna be walled off to the world. Maybe they want it. I, I don't know. It just seems like I'd, I'd wanna know whether or not that was happening. It's not that big of a deal, but it does concern me. The side setbacks are too, too tight. I mean, eight feet, 12 and a half feet is there for a reason, and I don't really see any reason why we would change that. I'm, I'm in, you know, I'm obviously in favor also of the rental moratorium if they're willing to do that, and, and I think the precedent has pretty well been set over there on Sulfur Springs, like the gentleman mentioned. I mean, those are giant lots that go back in there, and, you know, I actually had a call on that at some point, I bet you Greg did too, about somebody wanting to put, you know, a multifamily kind of apartment complex on that same thing, and it just doesn't fit there. It's in the middle of a bunch of single-family homes that are well off the road. I know this one is kind of not the older home that got caught in the curve. The only reason it's not is because they changed the curve to the road, and that's the only reason it's closer to the road. And so, I mean, just in, in the end, just as I look at this, it's kind of is, it's just, it's just too many and too small of a spot, and, and I could get okay with the rear setback, especially because of the, that public area or whatever, that little public envelope around the Victoria Place or whatever it's called. But the side setbacks at eight feet, I just can't get that out of my mind, that that's, you know, less than me to ken, that you're gonna come in and put a wall there on my boundary that's right there, and their, you know, their driveway is right there. I just, I just think we need to make some changes to this, in my opinion.
I like to look, the architectural style, I like that a lot, but I, I have a concern about the fire truck as well, because it could end up being a train wreck if a fire truck tried to go in forward and then couldn't have to back out on the, or, yeah, on Haynes.
They're gonna get in there. What, what you worry about is they're gonna, they're gonna get in there if there's a fire-
And can't get out.
And then can't get the equipment like they need to. I mean, I could just see that. I don't know. I'd want to ask them. They're the pros at it, so. But it does work.
We'll, we'll take another look at the, at the fire access for sure.
Yeah, in general, I, I like the idea of this project. I think the, you know, the, the houses on the front, and again, the 40-foot setback, similar to the, most of the houses on the road, maybe not the ones right next door to them and things, but most of the houses on Haynes Drive are gonna have a 40-foot setback line. I kind of looked at this similar to the project that this developer did on Maple Street, one of the first downtown they did, where they took a lot and put two houses, I think, and then you drove in and pulled in behind it, those two cottage-style houses on Maple Street, if you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I, I thought that was a really good project. I don't think those had any houses further in the rear. It's just the two, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, I like the concept. We might just be a little too tight here, just, again, I think it's more of the emergency access, so maybe some, some tweaking could get it a little more acceptable.
And of course, you know, the tree buffer around it is really supposed to be a positive.
I like the tree buffer.
Yeah, I mean, I-
I, I like it. I, I think that normally, we're, we're asking everybody to put a buffer in, and I thought that, I think that looks, looks nice and is, is a, a benefit.
Can, can we, Margaret Ann, can we, can we look to make sure to see, I mean, I, I guess I would be, I'd be curious. It seems to me, Ms. Jones thinks that most of the houses down there are 40 feet. I mean, I-
Up and down Haynes Drive?
Yeah. I don't, it seems to me that they're further than that, but I don't, I'm just going off of just driving down through there.
Typical RS-15 would have a 40-foot setback line.
I think the variation is the fact that some houses that are older maybe setback further, setbacks were, used to be a little bit more than what they are now, like it was typical to have a 60-foot front setback. I mean, I certainly, I, I don't know where you all are going, but I certainly could run a line along Haynes Drive over 40 feet back and just let you see where that is, if that's something that you think helps you, and, and it'll show you where it is. Some of the stuff, like on the west side of the property, that's a really old house. It's 30, 27 or 35 feet. It's been there a long time. It's gonna be torn down at some point, and either, something else was rebuilt there. The one that's on the east side is a newer house, and that, the owner was at the neighborhood meeting for this project, which happened last year, so it would happen a really long time ago. And so, they were aware of the project, and they've come to the planning commission city council for, for different items before. So that's a newer house, but they just chose, that house, the yellow house, is pushed back further because, I remember this just because I worked on it, there was an old house that was there that would belong to the owner's parents, and so they wanted to live in that little house while they built their new house. So that house was closer to the street, so they built this house behind that house, and then after, they got a C of O for the, the new house, they moved into that and they tore the front house down. So that's why the house, the yellow house is setback further, and probably you all remember that old house and the construction of the property. So that, that's why the yellow house is further back than the other ones. But, and then some of the Jamison Place subdivision, they have a berm and buffer that run along Haynes. And so if you have no access to Haynes, and you have a berm and buffer, then you can call that a rear setback. So in RS-15, the front is 40 and the rear is 30. Make sure I'm saying things correctly here. And so some of those could be 30, but they have a berm and a buffer, so you're not really looking at house right on the road there. Of course, you know, Haynes Drive is something we know today needs work, needs help. It's why it's a short-term improvement or major transportation plan. And I know council's wrestled with timing of that, and what that will do to the properties that are around there, because right away it's needed. We do have plans for Haynes Drive. We know that if nothing, if development never happens from here till eternity, still something needs to happen with Haynes Drive. So, we're aware of that. It's a matter of prioritizing, you know, our capital improvements plan and where that falls in there. Some of Haynes's opportunities are geometry. I know that some of you've heard about cars landing in somebody's house because they weren't making the curve correctly. I think we've made some hotspot improvements that might have helped, but staff is aware that Haynes needs work today, as it is.
Just to, I just did some quick measurements on, on GIS. Looks like, as Margaret Ann mentioned, the house to the, to the west is kind of an outlier as far as being much closer than the others. It's about 30 feet off of the front property line, and then the two to the, to the east are approximately, one's like 90 or 95, the other one is about 110 feet from the front property line. The rest range from between like 40 to 60.
Okay, yeah. Just curious in my mind, just to think about what that looks like as I drive down the road.
And did, did you all, down here on this end of the table, you all determined that this density in this development was-
Similar.
Similar to Victoria Park?
Yeah. I think the biggest difference is Victoria Park has yard and driveway where these are building envelopes or-
The building envelopes, yes. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
But similar-
In total, yeah.
In total.
Similar on average, but you know, you put a, a big loop in the middle and roads through it, and it's not like they're the same size lots. Oh, I do have another question. Are the, do you own just the home, or do you, you have a yard that you own?
It's just the home.
They're selling the homes, they, Brian Burns is not here tonight, told me that's what they were doing, with the option of doing a limited common area between each unit. So Tuscaney, you own the home, but there's a little, you can have a little patio or garden in the back, and so Brian told me that was the plan here. I don't know if Mr. Wilson has a different, or Judge Wilson has a different plan. No.
Is to do a private element plot. I'm sure you're familiar with that, where you own the land under the home, and then there are private elements that only the user, like a back patio, where only the occupant can use that, and the rest is common area.
Alright.
So, and as far as the distance from the road, I would encourage you, what Ms. Jones talked about, to look at our development on Maple, and, and we got some pushback on setbacks on that street as well, because all the houses are pushed back. But I think if you'll go back, go down that street and look at it, you'll see that it's, has much more road appeal than-
Are those houses the same size? I mean, are you saying those are, that's, those are the same size houses that you're gonna build on this?
Uh, they are, yeah. They're approximately the same size, about 2,300 square feet, I guess.
We're at 2,100.
Okay. Yeah. I think one on Maple is about 1,800, and the larger one's probably about 2,200. And they're blue and white, if you're familiar with that street.
Yeah, yeah, every day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I, I'll throw, I think you can make an argument that the density is similar to what's in the rear. However, you know, they don't have the yards like the houses in the rear. I think the price points of these are gonna be considerably higher than what's behind it, and so I don't think that there's, this is going to detract from any of the neighborhood property values based upon this development. I, I'm like Rick, though, now that it's been brought up, I'd love to understand how the fire department would handle it, and if they've got a plan, then I, I would be in favor of it.
Yeah, I, I hadn't even thought about the fire truck until it was brought up tonight. It's a good-looking development, it's good-looking houses, but I, I have a concern with as far as safety goes for, for a fire truck.
But I, I would say, I'd like us, you know, to, to figure out how we're gonna do that, because I, I do think this is a, you know, I, I like the concept of this development, and if we're looking for ways to improve a higher-density development, you know, I think this is the type of thing we're looking for. So what do we do to make it work for our, our department?
And we want, the, the council said we want to give benefits to people who want to do single-family detached instead of townhomes, and we got single-family detached in front of us. We're just gonna figure out and make it work.
I mean, I think we have the whole common area in the middle to work with. That's all interior to the development, so I think we could work out something with, that the fire department would, would find suitable for, for their needs. We need to widen something or cut down on some common area or something, but I think that, if that's the sticking point, I think that would be a, a financial to discuss with the fire department, so they're comfortable with complete access to any, any homes in there.
And I'll just make one-
I think it challenges with, how are we gonna handle it tonight? Whether you pull it back and bring it back after we find out about the fire, because I, I agree with the rest of the guys and ladies that safety is key. So we've gotta figure out how to make that happen. And you won't be the only development that comes up with, with that same issue. We need to figure out how to make it happen, not just for you, but for everybody.
Right.
So, I guess our options would be to defer it and ask them to bring it back with hopefully a, a plan regarding the emergency services. And I think we're there, and we wanted to see the restrictions regarding the rental. And I guess we would have to ask if the developers are willing to, to do that, or would you like to request a deferral?
Well, certainly, I'll do whatever the council or the commission wants to do. I guess in the, in the interest of time, what I would like to see, of course, is maybe approve it subject to, I've already agreed to put the moratorium on, on rentals. It, I don't know if we could make it subject to appropriate fire marshal or fire department approval of our plan, but if you all want to defer it and us come back with a plan in place so that you all can see it, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Do you think it would be enough of a change in the plan? Or I guess you all would know, if whatever the fire department would require is enough of a change in the plan that it has to come back, you'll end up requiring that to come back? But if not?
If, if they can, if they can redesign it within the existing central, center area of the, of the site to, to make the geometry work for a fire truck, I, I don't think that would require another public hearing. But I, I do think that, that, that would probably be more appropriate for a deferral than, than approving it subject to staff working that out, just simply because of, you know, if, if for some reason we aren't able to get it worked out, then we're kind of left in a no-man's land, and I would think that it seems to be a big enough issue that the commission may want to see it, as Mr. Wilson mentioned prior to, to voting on it.
I, I don't have to move to defer it then, and so we can make everybody feel comfortable so we can get a fire plan in place. Alright.
Just one, yeah, as you, as we look through that, and I guess I'm just kinda curious, just for, this is just sort of internal to you guys, but, you know, as, as we list out our exceptions, you know, that we do have neighborhood rules in place for that kind of thing, whether or not that should be listed as an exception on, on a planned development. You know, if, if we have not, I mean, I guess it's a mechanism in my mind to make sure that you guys have already discussed it and, and got this ironed out before it gets to us also to, to understand, hey, this is gonna be an exception to a rule that we already have in place, just like we've done on setbacks.
So the, the exception is, you're, you're referring to is-
Exception is that in every other neighborhood, you gotta build your cul-de-sacs big enough to get fire trucks through it, you gotta have your, you gotta have your, you gotta be able to get garbage to it, you know, I-
I don't know that anybody's asking for an exception on that. I think it's just something that we need to research more to find, to make sure that he can meet our, meet the access requirement.
I guess what I'm saying is, as this shows right now, nobody thinks fire trucks can get through here, which means if we just approved it like it was, we would've never known if we wouldn't have asked.
Until there was a problem.
Until there's a problem. My point is to say, perhaps it should be listed as an exception, because that is one of the rules, just like a setback. Neighborhood ordinances say you gotta be able to get fire trucks in, you gotta be able to get garbage trucks in. Any of those things that don't exist on a planned development should probably be laid out for us to be able to understand, these are all the changes that are going on here. These are all things- These are all things we need to take into account before we approve it, is just sort of what I think, and would ask you guys to consider internally.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that we want to endorse a plan that has, that has an exception for fire access, so I think that's something that we want to, that we want to look at.
We're there.
We just, I can't imagine, the city engineer doesn't have information regarding the emergency equipment.
Yeah, I don't think that was our intention to bring a plan before you that, that was, that had that exception. I think it's just something that we need to look into.
No, it wasn't your intention, I'm just saying, let's put a mechanism.
Our key should have been when we knew that we were going to have a private hauler for the waste disposal.
Maybe.
Yeah.
But Brian's been doing the private haulers in other developments, too, so that wouldn't have, that wouldn't have been a big, or not, blue sky, not just Brian.
Yeah.
And that's listed as an exception. I think the only one is the safety one, the fire one. And I guess, is there a mechanism in place today that ensures that happens every plan? Most of the time, we know it is.
We will, we oftentimes reach out to our emergency service personnel and get their feedback on these plans. So it's, that's something that we, that we routinely do with the plans that we get in.
They'll probably call me, like, oh, yes, no problem at all.
Of course, it's not a cul-de-sac, so it would not be an exception to our standards for cul-de-sac. We do share with the plan with the fire department sometimes. What we have to do is say, hey, will you look at this specific thing? I would say that I would love for us to talk to our legal team, because I don't think the planning commission can give exceptions to fire safety. And so I think if this plan got approved, we move forward, and the fire department said it was a problem, I think they have the ability to go beyond that and say, you have to accommodate, this is public safety. So I don't think that planning commission can give an exception to it. But I think the bigger point is, maybe have this as a check that you're checking when you're reviewing all the other things that are in the zoning ordinance, which we can do, of course. I just want to be careful about, you know, city engineer has different abilities, the fire marshal has different abilities, zoning and planning is something different, so, and I don't, surrounded by attorneys, I'm not one of them, but...
All right. I think, I think the developer has asked for a deferral.
Yes.
Any comments or questions before we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much. All right. Our next item, item C. We have a zoning application for approximately 0.85 acres located at 1540 Commonwealth Court to be rezoned from RS-10 to PCD Georgetown Park parking lot. Mr. Skeeter Blue is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. Our third public hearing this evening is for you to consider an application that our department has for an amendment to our zoning map. It's for property that's located along Commonwealth Court, and it's showed in the yellow color on the screen before you. You can see that in the middle of that yellow shape is RS-10. That shows that the property is zoned, single-family residential district, with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The property along Commonwealth is, of course, adjacent to the Georgetown Park commercial development. It is also a part of the Georgetown residential development. The properties to the north and to the west are within the Georgetown subdivision, and then, of course, the CH is that Georgetown Park planned development, or that Georgetown Park commercial development. The property owner approached staff and was interested in rezoning this property to Commercial Highway District, that's CH District. Staff, of course, expressed some concern with that approach of zoning a residential lot to Commercial Highway District, and suggested the applicants hold a neighborhood meeting. They did hold a neighborhood meeting at the end of last year, and it was a relatively well-attended neighborhood meeting, and there was a lot of feedback at that time. I think many of the people who spoke also had concerns about the CH zoning. So the owner amended or done away with that application, submitted a new application to ask you to rezone this property to PCD, and they're calling it the Georgetown Park The PCD does propose to utilize the site for 66 parking spaces. The owner has expressed an intention for those to be restricted to employees. However, zoning would not regulate employee parking versus patron parking, and so that's not a part of the zoning plan, but that is something that they have expressed a desire to do. It will be integrated into the existing parking lot, not a separate sublot like you might see in a medical office. The, the plan does not show access to Commonwealth Court. That was a concern of staff early on. We wanted to, with the CH zoning, you could, can't add specific conditions of approval because then it's contract zoning, which is something in Murphysboro we try to avoid. So the owner with this PCD application is showing the 66 parking spaces, which is the only permitted use that would be allowed here. It also shows a multi-use path connection to Commonwealth Court, which will be designed to not allow vehicles, commercial traffic, to enter into the commercial development through Commonwealth. It'll have to use the entrance from West Northfield Boulevard into the overall center. The, the plan does propose a type D buffer adjacent to the single-family, existing single-family lots, and that type D buffer is what the minimum required in the zoning ordinance for a CH adjacent to an RS development. And so I did provide a detail of that buffer, so you can see what is typically a part of that, and that's here on the screen as well. The, a parking lot does not have a building, a permit associated with it, as, because there's no building being constructed, but what we do require is a site work permit. And so the site work permit would be required to be obtained by the developer. And prior to us clearing out that permit, we would, of course, make sure that the plans are constructed as shown. This program book is the overall concept plan for the development. The next step would be, if it were approved, to have an engineer and landscape architect work on the plans that would come back to planning commission for their review, and after that permitting can be sought. The, the proposed future land use map does show this lot as a future character of suburban residential character. I did describe it somewhat in our last presentation. It is for single-family detached type developments with a minimum lot size generally 10, 12, or 15,000 square feet, but there can be some variety in there. The commercial use is not consistent with a suburban residential character, obviously because of the, the use is different. However, something that's new in our proposed future land use map, amendments to the comprehensive plan and to the map, is that we created a transition policy for the planning commission and city council to consider. So I think that our department has the most faith in the future land use map plan that we're presenting to you that we have ever had, and, but we knew that we can't predict all situations, and so we know that there are some scenarios where it may make sense to deviate from what the map shows. And the transition policy lists some of those scenarios, there are seven of them. And, for example, one is that, that more than one land use type category may be suggested on large parcels. One of those seven transition policies is current land development patterns support the expansion or contraction of a specific land use boundary or land use change. So because this lot is adjacent to general commercial development, you can consider implementing the transition policy with this and say, well, it makes sense to incorporate it into the general commercial land use category, because it's owned by the same developer, and it would be integrated into that developer. So that option exists for you, even though the future land use map shows that it's not consistent. The applicant is here, and they're representative, and they'd like to present some additional information to you regarding this PCD zoning request, before they come up. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green before we hear from the developer?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret Ann. Again, I'm Benny Pandorf with Hudson Steel, representing Skeeter as the developer of the property. And going to walk you through. So the main purpose is really to expand for more parking. It's not going to be gated parking, it's going to be all just an extension of the existing parking lot that, that serves the retail areas that you're aware of, adjacent to Georgetown. It is at the end of the Commonwealth Court cul-de-sac, but as Margaret Ann said, it would not be accessible through vehicles from Commonwealth Court. There is, one of the main topics that came up as we were discussing this, is there is a stormwater, sorry. There is a stormwater drain that's right on the edge of the property, right here, that's, it basically just drains from Commonwealth Court, and it's, it's got a, some natural drainage across the existing cleared lot right now. So the owner is committed to exceed the city of Murphysboro standards for bringing it up to any standards that the city of Murphysboro would have. He does not want to have any stormwater issues on his lot, so he, again, is, is going to go above and beyond what the city requires. That's something that would be addressed in the actual design phase, part of the construction Margaret Ann noted that we do have a type D buffer of trees here for these spaces, since there is a residence right here. So, again, to, to just protect from the headlights at night going into that, that property. The, there will be some shade trees scattered throughout some of the islands of the parking lot, and of course, there'll be some added decorative and code-required lighting for the parking lot as well. It'll have a cutoff for, to not affect the adjacent neighbors, as far as the night sky kind of cut off. Are there any questions?
Can you tell me which page in the plan book is the best one to see the lighting that you're referring to, the decorative lighting? Is that page 11, has the decorative lighting? Or is there another place? So do I see one?
It's really just part of the landscaping plan.
Okay. So page 11, oh, that's the site plan.
Let me say...
Yeah, it is shown on light 11.
Up near the house...
Mr. Blue, can you state your name and address, please?
Skeetabolio, and the address of the shopping center, 1602 West Northfield.
Thank you.
And so, up top there, where all the big tall shrubs are, there are a whole bunch of them there right now, they're probably like 30 feet. And we're going to put some lights up there, but the lights are only going to shine towards the Five Senses Restaurant. The back of the lights won't shine. Currently, all the way in the back on the berm that separates the houses on, I believe it's Georgetown Street, I have those lights right now facing towards the road, so it doesn't shine into the people's houses. And that's worked really well. The shrubs that are there right now, we're going to continue that all around, they're probably 30 feet tall. Also, the land's about, I don't know, four or five feet higher than my current parking lot. That's going to bring, that's going to get dug out and come down. So the cars coming in are going to be much lower below the houses as they come in. So I don't foresee any problem with, you know, lights shining on a house from cars or the decorative lights that we put up.
So the shrubs that you're going to put in along the property line up there that you're showing, those would be elevated, would be like a berm?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
I mean, if one of you could talk about this multipurpose path, we would appreciate it, and I think everybody else would appreciate it that are here.
Okay. Well, I've owned the building for 16 years. For 16 years, I've watched people walk through that property, ride bicycles through that property, and ride their golf carts through the property. And now that I own the property, I'm always holding my breath. I don't want somebody getting hurt. There's potholes, and they go over the sides of some of the berms where the, you know, golf cart is like this way, going over a berm. And by putting in this parking lot and leaving a multipurpose opening that, I think it's going to be like eight feet, but I talked about maybe putting a couple of, what are they called, bollards or something? Where it shrinks it a little bit more, so there's no way a little car like a Fiat or a Mini Cooper can fit through there. I don't want any traffic going in and out of there at all. And the purpose of this, this parking lot is, all the customers of my tenants, and Madam Chairman Jones used to be a tenant of mine, I don't want my tenants' customers having to park way in the back, because my tenants and their employees are taking up all the spots. I have like 85 tenants and employees in that center. And I want their customers and their doctors, patients, to be able to park right in front of the door and walk in. I don't want them having to walk, I've seen some people have to park all the way in the back, because there's no parking up near the doors. This would solve my problem. I can put my tenants and their employees in that parking lot. There's going to be an island that separates that parking lot from the original parking lot. There'll be an entrance to get in and out, and that'll be for the tenants and their employees, which will open up a ton of spaces for people's customers and doctor-patients to park right near the doors and get in.
Did I answer enough questions on the multimodal path? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. We will now open the public hearing. And again, we'll ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak on this item, which I'd imagine there are quite a few, so I'll remind you that you have three minutes to speak. Please watch your time, so that everybody in attendance will have a chance to speak. Again, we'll make note of all your questions, and we will attempt to answer them at the end of the public hearing. And again, please address all your questions to the planning commission and not directly to the developers. So with that, we'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak.
My name is Christine Daniels. I live at 1534 West Northfield Boulevard. I've lived in that residence for four years, and I've taken a notice now of the Georgetown Shopping Center. I actually brought some pictures of various times throughout the day, tried to take them every two hours from the parking lot angle where the parking lot will be. Is it okay if I...
You want to pass?
Yeah. The various tenants there are our doctor's office, like you mentioned, and there's also restaurants, so the parking lot's not always busy. You know, it's, it's different times of the day, you know, more evening for the restaurants and stuff. And then I just would like to ask, you know, if this is approved, what's going to be the construction entrance? Are they going to use that parking lot on Northfield? Or are they going to use our street on Commonwealth for the dump trucks and construction equipment? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Daniels. Who else?
Will we respond to that?
No. There'll be lots of questions, and we'll make notes, and we'll respond at the end. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Casey Vaughn. I live at 1547 Georgetown Court. This lot, known as Georgetown Park, is just as much part of our neighborhood as any other lot within Georgetown. You can imagine ours and our neighbors' concerns, as there has been continued discussion and physical actions, of which were not permitted, made to convert the space to a 66-car parking lot. According to page number 395, and I apologize, I was looking on the agenda online, so it was all...
was all the pages combined. But according to page number 395 on the submitted rezoning proposal found on the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission agenda, the subject property consists of one lot within the Georgetown Residential Subdivision, and quote, "Georgetown Park PCD is a single-family residential lot located within the Georgetown subdivision." I have spoken with our HOA President of Georgetown regarding the following rules set forth by our Homeowners Association as this falls under the Georgetown HOA jurisdiction. These articles are known as Georgetown's Protective Covenants, Development Standards, and Bylaws for Georgetown Subdivision. I have a copy here that I'd be happy to produce for you all if you would like, if you would like a copy. I've selected the articles relevant to this matter below. Article one, "The committee shall have powers and duties necessary for proper care and control of the common areas in said subdivision as the buffer zones and entrances into said subdivision, and may do all acts as set forth herein or as delegated by the lot owners." Such powers and duties that the committee shall include but not be limited to the following: Construction plans and reconstruction improvement specifications to be erected on any lot must be submitted for committee approval. Article two, "In all decisions, each lot owner or owners shall be entitled to cast a vote appurtenant to such lot. Each lot owner shall be entitled to cast one vote at all lot owners' meetings. The presence in person or by proxy of lot owners representing 40% of the total amount of lots shall constitute a quorum at all lot owners' meetings. The vote of a majority of lot owners at a meeting in which a quorum shall be present shall be binding upon all lot members." Article three, "No structure shall be erected on any lot other than a single-family dwelling, I'm sorry, other than a single-family dwelling with attached garage or attached carport. No lot shall be used except for residential purposes. Commercial or business activity, whether short-term or long-term, may only be conducted on a lot with written approval of the Georgetown HOA Committee." It, it kind of goes on to say that these protective covenants should be enforced by the committee and any individual lot owner, which is why I'm here today. According to page 409 Development Team and Project Summary that the lot owner submitted, it states that a neighborhood meeting was conducted, and at that meeting, the neighbors did not object to the parking lot, but wanted assurances that could only be provided by rezoning the property to PCD. While true, no further neighborhood meetings were conducted with the lot owners to list out assurances, and no vote nor written approval was granted by the HOA to make this a commercial lot. I believe this information is vital when considering the motion to approve the proposed rezoning. It is my belief that until further conversations and written approval from the HOA is presented, no further action should take place, and the city should deny the motion to rezone 1540 Commonwealth Court from RS 10 to PCD. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
My name is Steve Embry. I live at 1514 Georgetown Court. I've been a resident in Georgetown for 30 years. It's a quiet subdivision. It's a dead end. Very safe, very little crime. I'm afraid if you approve this, that those things will change. We have a lot of people that have moved into the neighborhood now that have children. We have lots of kids, riding bikes, walking pets, riding golf carts up and down Georgetown, around the cul-de-sac. And I, I, I would hate to see any, anybody get hurt because of the additional traffic that'll probably come into our area if you approve this. Also, I think you're setting a precedent, because there are other lots adjacent to this, and if you all approve this, I'm sure somebody else is going to want to have, have the other lots approved, which will just further deteriorate our subdivision. So, I respectfully, respectfully ask you to deny this.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
Hey, good evening. My name's Ben Layhugh. I'm at 1603 Georgetown Lane. Just wanted to say that I agree with Ms. Vaughn's earlier statements. I live directly behind Five Cents', and I'm adjacent to this, where this parking lot is going to be. I'm opposed to that, just like any one of y'all. I think if you had a parking lot going to be within 15 feet of your property line, you'd probably not be in favor of that. So, I would vote that we disapprove of that. So, and the lights, you know, I know that the developer has attempted to, you know, adjudicate some of the lighting and some of the sound, but when you have commercial lights within 20 feet of your property line, you're going to see light. And I'd invite any one of you guys to come to my back property and sit on my back patio and see how much light comes through. So, just in favor of the neighborhood, in favor of everybody here, I think that it should stay residential and not zone commercial. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's next?
John Roberts. I'm at 1547 Georgetown Lane. Ben is my neighbor. I also just wanted to ask the commission to please vote no to the voting, to the zoning request. Like Ben said, we already have tons of light. The trees that were spoken of, they already don't block what is there, so when you add more light, it's just going to add more light to our backyards. I have pictures. It's noisy. We can see everybody's taillights. We can hear people's conversations. You know, I also think this is going to negatively affect our home values, so I'm, I'm here to ask you guys to please, please vote no for the zoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Madam Chairman, I am Patty Marshall, 1510 Georgetown Court. My husband, John, and I have been residents of Georgetown Subdivision for 37 years. Property values have increased. They have increased. Young families, but so many have moved in, and so many more want to move in. All these precious kids on bicycles, they go up and down Commonwealth, they go through the subdivision. We moved into this subdivision because it, it was a one-intrance subdivision. It was contained. And I will have to say, every year we've lived there has been a wonderful year. But what we are seeing now is commercial trying to invade on our subdivision. The noise factor. I don't, the last meeting we had, we talked about how this area would be patrolled for just the employees there. And, and we couldn't get a definite answer that it could be patrolled till midnight on Saturday night, or 1 o'clock on Saturday night, whenever all these restaurants close. We're concerned how it will get out of control for our subdivision. We're concerned about the lighting. We're concerned about the noise factor. We're concerned about property value. And I hope you will agree with us that this property will not be zoned commercial.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Madam Chair, Mr. Roberts submitted for the record some emails from various homeowners who could not make it tonight, so I will circulate these to.
Okay. Thank you. Who else would like to speak tonight?
I'll be very brief, because everyone has stated exactly what I feel. I have lived in Georgetown in this particular house, which is two.
Joyce, go ahead and state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joyce Taylor, 1535 Georgetown Lane.
Thank you.
The house that I currently live in, I've been there since 1987, so it's two doors down from where this is supposed to, to happen, and we respectfully ask that you do not approve this for all the reasons that have been mentioned earlier, and I really can't add much to it because they have expressed it beautifully. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are, I don't know if we'd let everybody stand up who's here opposed to this, but we have a big, big contingency here tonight, and I know it's not time for everyone to speak. So, okay. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Anyone else? Okay. We will close the public hearing. And let's see, what questions we can answer? I think the very first one was regarding a construction entrance if this were to be approved. They would have to come in through the parking lot, right? You can't get across Commonwealth Court and get over here.
I think one of the comments, and I'm not as intimate with this, is that the owner began doing work on this site to create it into a parking lot, that however, we did stop work order, issued something, had to tell him to stop the work because the zoning did not allow what was being done. And so, I think that's what they're talking about. As far as construction entrances, we can regulate those with the site plan, but also, you can add that as a condition of the plan development, that they put a note on here saying that any construction traffic will only be through Northfield Boulevard, through the existing center. But I think what they're talking about is work the owner did without permits and approvals.
Okay. True. Mr. Ballou? Ballio? How do you say it?
Yeah. Skeetaboleo. 1602 West Northfield. So, I wasn't working on the property to start the project. What I did was, there's a drainage ditch. I put a drain, big drain pipe in it to allow the water to flow through. I put crushed rock over it, put a pathway across the field, and had it come out near Five Cents's Restaurant. It was a pathway put in for the golf carts, because the golf carts were coming straight in, and they were going over the berm near my dumpster behind your old spot, and they were like this going over. And I was afraid somebody's going to tip over and get hurt. So, I put in this, you know, crush rock pathway for the golf carts to use and go around. They started using it for a day or two, and then, you know, I got a call from the city and got a, a letter that you can't do that. You gotta pull a permit, and plus, you have to rezone it because people are cutting across your property. So, I removed it. Had nothing to do with starting the project. Also, I met with, at a neighborhood meeting, I believe it's Ms. Marshall, met with her, and when Margaret Ann recommended that we change the term of the zoning, she stated then she wouldn't have a problem. And I remember specifically saying, okay, so, you know, if this is good with you, I don't have to worry about any problems from you coming forward afterwards. So, she didn't hold up her end of the bargain. Also, I believe it's Ms. Vaughn saying that the lot's part of the Georgetown Homeowners Association. I met with the president of the Homeowners Association before I began all this. He told me that my property is not part of the Georgetown Homeowners Association, and the houses on Commonwealth Ave or Commonwealth Court are not part of the Georgetown Homeowners Association. So...
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Ballio while he's up?
Mr. Ballonley, is there any way that you can look at our GIS map, or, you know, is there some way to see whether or not, how we have that listed, whether it's in the HOA or not?
I, I can't tell you whether or not the HOA controls it. That's not something that we would, but I do have the plat pulled up, and, and, so, in 1991, it looks like Lot 38 was subdivided. Looked like Lot 38 initially went all the way down to Commonwealth Court, and the owner at the time looks like a Jimmy and Judy Porter subdivided that into two separate lots, 38A, which had the existing house, and 38B, which had frontage on Commonwealth Court. So, that lot was created in 1991 as Lot 38B of the Georgetown subdivision. Now, whether or not it, I, I can't speak to whether or not it's subject to the, to the covenants or not. That's, I'm not a lawyer, I can't make that.
It would take some time to look through the covenant documents to make sure that, you know, we have the originals and all, any amendments that have been made to it, and that's, that's the only way to tell. GIS isn't going to have anything about HOAs, so it would take, it could be determined through that review, though, whether it, whether these are part of that or not.
I, I just have a random question, and the people in the audience can stand up, raise their hand or whatever. I've heard from two neighbors today on the phone that corroborated the idea that people use this path with golf carts or bikes or whatever. Are any of the people who are opposed to this, have they used this path prior for golf carts, bicycles, walking, or something like that? Just be interested to know.
Not anybody here tonight. Oh, there's one.
Yeah. Just interested to know.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not raising.
Oh. We, we've closed the public hearing right now. Thank you. No. Sorry. Let's, now.
Have you guys?
I, I, I just don't remember ever coming up that we can't rezone something.
The covenants do not, regardless of whether this is in or, in or out of the Georgetown HOA, the covenants cannot preclude the city from rezoning a property. And they certainly can contractually control what people do while the, the property is within their subdivision, but the city has the power to rezone and essentially to take this lot out of that subdivision, or out of the HOA, and out of that subdivision, frankly, and put it into another subdivision. The city has that power.
I, I got a question. I guess I'm just curious on this and just trying to get my hands around what the purpose of this exactly is. I've been over there a whole bunch and don't ever remember seeing that entire back parking lot full, or really, any of the parking lot completely full. Is, is the need for 66 more parking spaces so you can expand into more buildings or something like that? I mean, I, I just don't, I don't, never seen it that way. I've been like a lot.
It does get that way. You just haven't seen it maybe go over there at night. The other thing is they were talking about the parking lot being used, they were talking about the parking lot being used at night, noise, this and that. Most of these people close their businesses at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock at night, and they're gone. The restaurant employees park way in the back beyond the building, you know, Five Cents's Restaurant employees. So, you know, most of these people are gone by 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock. There may be a few hair salons that might, a few hairstylists that might work a little bit later, 7:00, 8:00 o'clock, but the majority of the cars will be gone by probably 5:00, 6:00 o'clock at night.
I think that's been my experience, yeah.
Now, Monday, there's a lot of tenants that are closed.
Hey, Matthew, can, can you do something while he's standing up there? Can you go back to that satellite view? Yeah. Mr. Ballio, can you tell me, if you, if you look at the end right there, the 1602 Suite 515, you see that last building?
Yeah. Five Cents's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That space that's right adjacent to that, that's, yeah, that right there?
Yeah, I can develop that.
Yeah.
And I've been told, I investigated that 16 years ago, and I was told that the parking that's there right now would cover an extra 6,000 square feet.
Gotcha.
So, that's why all that parking's in the back. But that parking in the back fills up. I mean, you go there at 7:00, 8:00 o'clock on a Thursday, Friday night, and you'll see that getting all filled up. Furthermore, I don't know how old that picture is, but right now, all the people in my building from, and it's the, the big long building right there where Five Cents's is, all the people down to Coral Salon, Com and Jewelry, all the way down, I've been having their tenants and employees park way back there. Guess Semenico Cardiovascular, iHealth Partners, I've been moving them all back there to create more spots, you know, towards the front and in between those two buildings.
Okay.
So, I know that other woman was talking about pictures of where the parking lot may look empty. Yeah, if that's a Monday, when a lot of people are closed, a lot of hairstylists aren't open on Monday, and... on Monday, and Station Grill isn't open on Monday, which brings in a lot of lunch crowd and dinner crowd. Deep South Growlers, they're closed on Monday. So a lot of those people are closed on Monday, and so it doesn't look like the parking lot's full. But once you start getting into Tuesday, Wednesday, all the way into Saturday, you know, yeah, it can get pretty full. I mean, I go there, I was just there today, I had to park past Five Cents', because there was no parking spaces for me. So...
This might be a question for Greg. Greg, if the parking lot currently is suitable to add a 6,000-foot building on that property, how many parking spots are needed for a 6,000-square-foot building if that was to be developed?
Yeah, that'll... Matthew? So, if it's... So, we have different parking standards.
Say, 6,000-foot restaurant?
6,000 for restaurant. Restaurant is parked at one for each 100 square feet of floor area, or one for every two seats, whichever is greater. However, if it's, if the percentage of food service uses in the center falls under a certain threshold, then we park it at a commercial center, not a commercial center, because it would be too big for a commercial center, but like a neighborhood shopping center, which is a straight 1 to 225 or 250 square footage for the entire center. So I haven't done the analysis on whether or not it would qualify for that.
I think he's saying that even, if he built it now, it already has the parking space.
That's what I'm saying. So if it already has the parking equivalent now...
But I'll tell you what the... So the space that, just my personal experience with this center. If you look at, if y'all are scrolling through your plan book there, like, look at page nine of the plan book that has the A, B, C, D, it's showing where they're taking different pictures of this. Just 'cause that's the easiest way for me to explain to you where I was. So basically, he's got the long strip that's got, you know, Station Grill on the front end, and Five Cents' at the very end. The other little center across the street that has the Growler on one end, and has a real estate office, the little L-shaped building. I was in the little curve, where the real estate office is now, the opposite end of the L-shaped building from the Growler. So that section of parking space, which is underneath that little marked E right there, for all the people in the L-shaped parking, the tenants in the L-shaped parking building, and the Station Grill, Coleman Jewelers, the other things that are right there on the front, this is where your customers want to park when they come see you. If you have even one employee from each of the tenants that chooses to park in these spaces under the circle E, then there are no parking spaces left for any customers to come. So you try to get your employees to park all the way down the side, or the very end, past Five Cents'. That's where all the parking spaces are for this complex. So that's the dilemma here, is that there are parking spaces available in this complex. It's just, we have employees that will not abide by where they're asked to park, and that is just speaking from my own personal experience. So you have people that come by that want to visit your space, and they don't have any place to park, so they just drive through and go on. So I see the... You know, I can see where, if I was still in that space, I would be thrilled to have this potential parking that we could ask employees to park in. I think they're a lot more likely to park in that. But I would also think that there would need to be some very strict guidelines and requirements for the developer to make sure that any landscaping that was required, any lighting, all the things that would be required to put a parking lot in like that would be done. They tend to take a little longer than he might have promised when I was there. So I think it would have to be a lot better than that for a development like this. I think that this development, you know, I have used Georgetown on many occasions, sitting up here, when we talk about other developments in our city that are potentially coming, that don't want to be near a Kroger, or don't want to be near any type of commercial. I think, you know, you all, it already backs up to commercial space, but it's very nice commercial space, and it also provides a lot of conveniences in the things that we use our commercial spaces for. I mean, you've got dry cleaners, or you've got, you know, the grocery store is so convenient. You know, the very idea of the neighborhood commercial center is to provide the services that the people in the neighborhood need. I just think if something like this is done, it just has to be probably multitudes nicer than you would even expect to get it done.
I think it's an important thing to know if the CCRs do cover this lot. Speaking from an HOA board member in my current neighborhood, HOAs are put in to be the most local governing body of a neighborhood. So if we're saying that this lot is part of that governing body, then that governing body should vote and make that decision before it comes to us. If it's not the governing body that would be the most astute, or the most close, then yeah, come to us first. But if it's in the CCRs, this HOA needs to vote on it before we get a hold of it.
Can I?
I think that's asking an awful lot of every development we ever have that comes before us, that it's gotta...
I mean, I can tell you this, if my neighbor wanted to make the next door and house to me commercial, I'd be pretty upset, too.
That's, you know...
So I got a question here that I'm, I don't know, man. Maybe I don't know how to read this picture here. But I'm trying to look at the picture of the parking spaces. It would be on as kind of... Oh, wait, there's no page number.
Trying to figure out how you get 60 pieces out of that lot.
Just the Georgetown Park Parking Lot picture?
Page 11.
Mine says page 76 on my...
Oh.
Nah, looks like this. You know, it just sort of lays it out.
Yeah.
Can you zoom in on that?
It's on the... Tell me where it hurts, Rick.
So, if I'm... Some of these are already in place. That lower section of those is already in place, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Are you looking at the same?
The electronic computer is the one that we're all looking at, and not Mr. Blomley.
So here's what I'm... Yeah, there we go. So that left, so it's all what's within the...
It's in the red line, or the dish line here.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, you know, I guess my initial response here, my reaction is, just kind of for where I'm, just to say where I am on that, is... Yep.
What is that?
I thought it was a smiley face.
How is that good?
I thought it was a smiley face. I was like, yeah.
You don't work on those kids.
Some of the parking spots are not on this lot. Some of the parking spots are on his existing land. Is that right?
Sure, that's right.
That section right there, that's just to the left of the line?
Right.
No, 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 but...
Yeah, right here.
These.
Yeah, they're already there.
I got you.
This is the lot.
So, I guess...
For those that bounce up against the red, the lower, right there, they are existing spaces right now. That's where I used to have my employees parked, straight up against the Georgetown, what would look to be the Georgetown property.
Okay.
Georgetown subdivision property.
Look, I guess where I was going with this was...
Face in towards the Georgetown property when they pulled in.
Is there a compromise here available, potentially? I mean, I know, you know, I mean, we're...
Cut it in half.
We move away from right on top of neighbors, or five feet from their line, and have them cars pull in there. We can have a little bit more of a buffer. You still get 30 or so parking spaces, and they're over there closer to where it is. Is there a... It seems like that might make this a little more acceptable.
I've got the ortho up that shows what's existing, and then the property...
Yeah, I see it now. That's exactly where she was looking. There's that row that's right adjacent to the red. Are you seeing it, Kathy? Oh, yeah. That's adjacent to the red line, right?
How many of these are in the current...
So how many of these? The plan showed the parking lot that's there as well.
Yeah, who owns that pie-shaped piece? That's already part of the owner's... Yeah, so it's already in this.
It's already part of the CH zone property. And this is RS15. This is a house.
So are those bushes and trees right there, are they part of the buffer that we require? Or could that be added parking right there?
These are part of the required buffer when the plan was originally approved. Of course, when the plan was originally approved, some of the standards were different than they are now, and so they would be held to today's standards. But this is the buffer. Now, there's some trees that, there's a house here, and you can see these trees, they're not on the subject property, they're the neighbors, and so he won't get credit, or should not get credit for those.
It is on my property.
Okay.
Those trees are on my property.
Surveillance. Lansky Architect told me they weren't. Did you want, you asked about a compromise, which of course, I wouldn't be prepared to answer, because it's not my property. Did you want to ask the representatives a question?
Yeah. Just take a sliver right off the back like that. Maybe take that line and just cut it.
It still is on the buffer.
You need to give us pens up here, too, Margaret Ann.
I do need to give you some pens. We need to up our game, and I'm ready for it.
See, the pie-shaped piece that starts at the top? If you just extended that line straight down, yes, just like that. And that gives enough to get it... No, straight down.
Oh, straight down.
Yes. Like, make a pie.
Make a pie.
Uh-huh. With, on that angle right there.
Depends on how you play your pie, I guess.
You know, where you're just taking a...
If you, if...
Mm-hmm.
Look, I think we're... If you look at the map right here, or the picture that I was looking at, and you go, you take this, the line that's up there in the little corner piece?
Mm-hmm.
You see the one that comes off at the angle about 5:00 o'clock, on the clock, and run it straight through the RS10?
Right.
Nope, nope, the other one up in the little...
Go back to the pie.
The little corner triangle.
Yes.
Yeah, run that straight through the R and the S, like it keeps coming straight across there. Yeah. It looks like on here, if you ran that straight across there, I mean, almost straight, you get, you pick up about 34 to 38 spaces, and you give up those ones that are gonna have the lights shining out towards the houses primarily. You have a bigger buffer. I mean, that just seems to me like that... And then, plus, you get the ones over here on the left, I didn't even count, or the right, I didn't even count those that abut the building. So, you know, it looks like that may be somewhere in the neighborhood of 35 or 40 spaces, and you have a much bigger buffer, and you don't have all the ones where the people are coming in and pointing straight there, and staying there, and maybe sitting there on their phone with their light shining in their swimming pools, and, you know, the stuff that I think everybody's feeling a little bit, well, more than a little bit negative about. But I, you know, here's the end of the story. For me, I'm out as it sits. So everybody else can say what they, you know, wherever they are, but...
I'm out as it sits.
That's where I am, as it is, as it's proposed.
I'm out.
But I'm okay with doing something.
I like the compromise, if we can do it.
So...
Some version of it.
Here's what, here's where we are on this, as far as, well, maybe Kathy, you...
Any other comments?
I think I just heard four people say they're looking for a compromise, and so however...
You're gonna get it all. Or at least, I'm about to say.
He keeps asking to talk. I told him that it's up to the chair whether he speaks or not. But if you don't have any questions for me, I'll sit down.
Do y'all have any questions for Margaret Ann before we hear from Mr. Bolio again?
He's pressuring me. I know it's your job.
Basically, we can have the option to either ask for a deferral and see if you want to maybe try to come up with a compromise.
Could you pull up that picture again of the property?
If you did that, that's the same.
We can't.
That one right there.
That one.
Right, right. Let me see if I got the mouse here. So basically, you want to get rid of all these spaces here, build a bigger berm, I And be further away from the house. Remember, the lights only shine one way, towards the building. The other thing is, that property's four or five feet higher than my parking lot, it's gonna come down. So any cars coming in are probably gonna be below the pool where the lights are shining. You know, if I got rid of all these spaces back here that are closest to Mr. Roberts' house, you know, and put a bigger berm than what's in here right now, certainly, you know, that would definitely...
Here's my...
Cut out all the, any lights coming in.
Let me, can I give you a suggestion, and everybody can kind of say, yeah, we kind of, either, or no, let's go a different direction. But my suggestion would be to go back to the drawing board a little bit, cut this number somewhat, basically in half, and then make it fit the best it can fit, with the number being about half of what it is, to benefit the neighbors the best. And if it's still that it's lower and all that, I recognize that's a benefit. I'm not discounting that at all, okay? But I hope that you'll recognize that this is asking a lot, to take a residential lot and turn it into commercial property, basically, just through a plan development. And so I'm willing to try to help you out and get something done here for you, in my personal view on that. But how it sits, I just can't accept it. And so, if...
I certainly can work with you on it. The property is clearly within the shopping center area. Nobody's gonna build a house in there. You got one building right in front of the property, you had a parking lot touching it. It doesn't make sense to build a house. I disagree about adding value. I think building a parking lot's gonna add more value, rather than a crummy piece of land.
Mr. Bolio, would you like to ask for a deferral and bring it back?
Yeah, I could definitely, you know, redraw that and lose these spaces, and pull the berm further away from Mr. Roberts' home, and I think, you know...
All the homes back there on the back, yes.
Well, really, it's just his house and the house to the right that's affected.
Okay. So, thanks. I'm gonna make a motion, we defer it.
Second.
Motion, and lots of seconds. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Next, we're moving on to Item D. We have an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 16.3 acres located along Emory Road, the Ann Watkins family Emory Road Trust, and the Samuel Watkins family Emory Road Trust applicant. And Mr. Blomley, I believe you're gonna take this tonight.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And first of all, I'm gonna look to Mr. McKnight to see if he put telestrators for the planning commission in the budget this year.
No, that might be dangerous.
Or mind readers. Mind readers would be even better. Yeah, that line.
I wanna see what you can draw, Rick.
See if you can write "existing" more legible than Ms. Green.
That's what you were trying to write?
I can't write "existing" more legible on a piece of paper.
I thought you were writing Exhibit A.
Okay, here we go. Mr. Blomley.
All right, thank you. Sorry for the, sorry for the moment of levity.
We're not even halfway through yet.
I think I'm delirious from lack of supper.
Uh-oh.
So, our next item is an annexation request for two parcels located along Emory Road. One of those is a vacant parcel that has frontage directly on Emory Road, and the other parcel is a parcel that actually has a house on it, and its only frontage that it has is off of Laurelstone Drive, which is the new street, the Laurelstone subdivision off of Last Cassus Pike. So it's the area colored in green on the map before you. The northern parcel is 11 acres, and the southern parcel is a little over 5 acres, for a total of 16.28 acres. There's a companion RS10 zoning request on the property that will be the next item on the agenda. For anybody who's here to speak about this, the first public hearing that we'll have will be for the annexation, and the second public hearing will be for the zoning. So there'll be two separate items on the agenda, one for the annexation and one for the zoning. The property is directly adjacent to the existing city limits. The property is directly adjacent to the existing city limits on the north, south, east end for a portion of the, uh, north, uh, southwest. And a portion of the eastern property line, uh, borders the Pebble Creek subdivision to the north and to the east. And the Laurel Stone subdivision to the, uh, excuse me, Pebble Creek to the, to the north and west. And Laurel Stone to the, to the southeast. Uh, Oakview Drive, which is a single-family residential street in the, uh, on Incorporated County is, is also to the east. Uh, Mr. Tabor, um, who is the applicant for the zoning, has a, has a, uh, proposal to construct a single-family neighborhood on the, on the northern, uh, property. But with regards to the annexation of this property, which is the first piece, um, we have the plan of services that's been provided in the agenda packet. There are a couple of items that that, uh, that the plan of services identified. One, the existing house at twenty-nine oh nine, uh, Emery Road, which if we can pull up the aerial photo on my computer. It is right around here. It has a driveway that comes in off of Emery Road all the way down the eastern property line, I got the direction right there. And it is a driveway that a fire truck cannot navigate. And so in consultation with our fire department, um, we would request that any approval of the, um, of the annexation comply with the following conditions. Uh, that they must install a twenty-foot wide emergency access from Laurel Stone Drive. Laurel Stone Drive dead ends here, it's much closer to the existing house than Emery Road. And also there's a, an existing fire hydrant at the end of Laurel Stone Drive, too. So install a twenty-foot wide emergency access drive from Laurel Stone Drive to serve the existing house. And then to dedicate a temporary emergency access easement in the location of that new driveway. And this can be extinguished, um, no pun intended, uh, upon the demolition of the existing house. That's fire department pun, I don't, I didn't, that wasn't, that was unintentional.
I got it, I like it.
Thank you, Rick, I appreciate that. So, um, so. So as long as, as long as that house stands, that, that access would need to be in place up until the point that Mr. Tabor develops the northern portion of the property and provides, um, suitable access for that, for that house. Also, um, uh, the proposed development, uh, we do not see having, um, in consultation with our transportation and our engineering departments. We do not see it making a connection to Emery Road. That section of Emery Road is where the ninety-degree, uh, curve in the road is. It is a substandard, um, section of roadway. Our engineering and transportation departments do not want to introduce more traffic from this development onto, directly onto that section of Emery Road. Which leaves Sandstone Circle at this location as the, um, as the only point of ingress egress. So what we would, what we would request is that the planning commission also condition the annexation upon, um, the developer. Upon there being an agreement executed between the city, the property owners, which is the Watkins family, and the developer prior to the annexation becoming effective. That the Laurel Stone Drive roadway connection will be recorded as a public right-of-way and constructed as a public street with the first section or phase of the proposed subdivision development, which would occur on the northern property. So, when this is developed, um, when the very first section or phase of this is developed. We are recommending that this connection to Laurel Stone Drive be made so that there's more than one way in and out of the subdivision. That was a concern that was raised to us during the neighborhood meeting. We had a neighborhood meeting last Tuesday on this. And, um, uh, the neighbors, when they were made aware that there wouldn't be, um, any access to Emery Road. There was concern about, about all of the traffic going through the existing Pebble Creek subdivision. So what that connection does, conditioning the approval on that, on that connection with the first phase of, of, of Mr. Tabor's development. What that does is it helps to disperse traffic so that not everything is going back to the west towards Pebble Creek. It provides multiple ways in and out of the development for emergency service providers and other service providers. And plus, it provides a more direct route to Last Cassis Pike. If, um, for folks who li- who would live in Mr. Tabor's proposed subdivision to get back out to Last Cassis Pike. They would have to go back through the Pebble Creek subdivision to get back to Emery Road. This takes them directly through another city subdivision, a much more direct route. So we would, um, so after, after hearing the concerns, the neighborhood meeting, we've spoken with Mr. Tabor. And Mr. Tabor has been, um, discussing that, uh, recommended condition with the Watkins family, who is, has a contract to purchase the property from. They initially did not want that connection to be made, but, uh, we have communicated to Mr. Tabor that, that we feel that it is, uh, a very important connection for the reasons that I, that I mentioned, um, and that connection should be made with the initial phase of his development. With respect to other services and utilities, um, those, uh, are, are regular complement of services. And, um, utilities can be provided to the property and, um, and it's outlined in the plan of services. Staff supports the, uh, the annexation of the, of the property for the reason that it is, um, within our, uh, proposed service infill line. And it is directly adjacent to, um, our existing city limits. And, um, we would recommend the three conditions that, uh, that I outlined earlier. That the planning commission, uh, recommend approval to the city council with the three conditions, uh, being addressed prior to the effective date of annexation. I'll be happy to read those conditions again if you, if you'd like.
Sure, we will need that before we make any motions. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Blomley before we open the public hearing?
So, uh, I listened to you, but I, what I didn't hear you say was that the Watkins family has agreed to the Laurel Stone connection.
We tasked Mr. Tabor with, with discussing that with the Watkins family. And I've further tasked him tonight to be, um, to be, uh, able to, to speak to that issue.
Mr. Tabor, you wanna go ahead and address that for us, please?
Good evening, I'm Jeremy Tabor, developer. And, uh, yes, I did talk to them and originally when we proposed this, that was going to be a future connection. So they, they really weren't originally wanting that to happen, nor were I, because, you know, we're not getting any lots out of it or anything. But, uh, anyway, uh, they, they wanted me to basically present to y'all that they really don't want it. But if it's an absolute condition, then we'll work through it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
Can you walk me through the Emery Road again? I mean, could that be just a three-way stop? Not that, for this particular, but just in, in the future? Cause it looks like you're gonna take the traffic right back to Pebble Creek and they're gonna go right back to Emery Road and back out.
Yeah, I, I think, I think some of the traffic, if, if we, um, I think to get back to Last Cassis Pike, I think the traffic would gravitate towards Laurel Stone Drive. I think.
Oh, I agree with that.
If, if they're going north towards, towards, um, Osborne Lane, it will gravitate through, um, through Sandstone Circle and the Pebble Creek subdivision. I think if there's just one way in and out of this, in and out of the Mr. Tabor's neighborhood, everything will go back to, to Sandstone Circle.
Okay.
So even if they're heading back towards Last Cassis Pike to the east, um, everything would have to go back that way. And, and as far as, um, um, Emery Road, um, if you have any questions about, about Emery Road and, um, and, and why we think that that is, uh, not appropriate to make that, that connection.
I drive that road a lot, so I understand.
Very good. All right. There's not any other questions, we will open the public hearing. And this is regarding the annexation petition and plan of services for this application. Anybody that would like to speak for or against, please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi there, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, JT Sherrill, uh, twenty-five thirty-eighth Sandstone Circle. My wife and, uh, three kids live on the backside of, uh, the proposed development. It was good to hear that the Laurel Stone thing, you know, tying that in over, uh, to kinda deflect some of the traffic that's going through Pebble Creek. That's absolutely what we would like. There's twenty-one kids inside of the, uh, Pebble Creek Phase Two development. So that, there's not a whole lot of four-way stops and three-way stops down through there. So, not only for the sake of construction traffic, but also for permanent residents as well. So, um, that's from a resident, I think everybody there the other night would, uh, would agree with, with those sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill.
Hi, I'm Daphne Davis, I live at twenty-five sixteen Pebble Creek Lane. And I'm the third house as you come in from Emery on the right. There's already a lot of traffic for the people who live in Phase One and Phase Two. And it would, um, diminish our quality, I think, if we ha- if that's the only entrance into these new thirty-six homes. We are a very active neighborhood, there are lots of young children running around in Phase One and Phase Two, as well as our dogs. We are a neighborhood where people run, we walk, everybody knows each other. And, and just adding that additional construction, which takes out our street signs, it breaks up our sidewalks because the roads aren't wide enough for this equipment to come through. Phase One, we've seen this with Phase Two being built, that it's just, it's very hard. And then they would have to make another ninety-degree curve by Mr. Sherrill's house to get through there. And it just, we really, if you're going to do this, please get Laurel Stone connected in the very beginning. It would make it easier for everyone, especially the construction people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Hello?
I'm Houston and I live on Oakview, two-eight-five-nine Oakview. And mine is more of, uh, I've got a problem with the dynamite people. I spoke to, I spoke to Jeremy the other day about it and he assures me that he feels the same way. But what happened back years ago, when they was building that sandstone or whatever. They blew a rock nine hundred foot over on Oakview, it go huge rock, busted a hole in my crunk, concrete driveway. My problem is the state limit on how much vibration is way too high. And I don't know if y'all could lower the state, you know, where they can, where y'all could say, hey, y'all gotta be below the state limit or whatever. But it's way too much. Uh, I, I put a camera in my house back when they were blasting next to us. And it was, it was just, the camera was just shaking all over and you hear dishes, windows. It just, the limit the state's got is way too high. Anyway, my problem is, once you get damaged, like on the house or in the house, they don't wanna pay for it. They, they just tell you, take them to court. And then I spoke to many people that had the same situation where they sent a man in to take pictures. He's not taking them for you, he's taking them for the blaster. So they're looking at any defect you got in your house to use you in case you take it to court, it ain't for you. So I advise this couple, anybody that lives in that area, take their own pictures. And even that don't work, I had pictures, I showed people the blasters pictures. They told me to take them to court. I need to be insured that, like, existing homes are gonna be covered without telling them, take, telling you to take it to court. Which you can't afford a lawyer just to take somebody to court, cause you're paying more than, for the lawyer than you are the blasters. Far as the traffic issue, I mean, I'm lucky, I don't have that issue. But that going through the other, uh, Laurel Stone or whatever up to ninety-six at certain parts of the day. Unless y'all do something, I'm sure that's gonna be city limits or in, in city limits. I know Laurel Stone is right up to ninety-six, so it's ninety-six city limits down.
Ninety-six is in the city limits up to Laurel Stone, right there, you see the.
Well, what I'm saying, if you're gonna direct this other traffic through there, plus you're gonna have all them people that's gonna be living in Laurel Stone. You get up to ninety-six before eight fifteen in the morning, it just bumper to bumper, all the way back over past, uh, Emery, all the way over to the hill. And you're lucky if somebody lets you out, they just stop and go. And even if you direct the traffic that a way, when they get up there, they're not gonna go nowhere. And a lot of it's to school, and then the red light down there, they time the light during school hours to where every time somebody from the, uh, the other street comes up, it's, it's changing for the school buses and the school traffic. So it's backing up ninety-six. Ninety-six is not letting Emery out on the road. So if you have that, you know, more subdivisions coming, and it's already stopped up, and Emery stopped up. And, you know, y'all, somebody's gonna have to do something with ninety-six right there. And like I say, a lot of it deals with that light, cause it, that light in the morning, it just, you know, it's changing for the school. And so that was my pro- main thing, and, uh, I was kinda warning everybody in their subdivisions that, you know, to control the blasters.
And the blasting, okay.
To control the blasters, uh, something has to be done, cause they're in a rush trying to get through and they're dynamiting as much as they can. They're blowing up their limit just to be done. And it's tearing up everybody's houses, you know. I've got cracks in my houses, I got a hole in my driveway.
Yes, sir.
And we shouldn't, we shouldn't have, you know, and surely shouldn't have the blaster say, hey, you take me to court. I mean, that's just not right.
Thank you, Mr. Houston, thank you for coming out tonight. Tell us about it, we appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak tonight? Just on the annexation. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing on the annexation. And everything looks to be regarding, making sure we have the second entrance from Laurel Stone. And of course, uh, the state limit on blasting. Mr. Ives or Mr. Blomley, can y'all tell us just for Mr. Houston, so he has some, I don't think we can do anything on that.
The state has the complete control over blasting. And that we, as a city, do not have any ability to, uh, put additional restrictions onto that. It may or may not be unfortunate, it seems to be unfortunate at times, but I do think that the state, uh, I believe it's the state fire marshal that preempts that.
I think Mr. Tabor heard all that. But, go ahead. Mr. Lantz, questions, comments?
I don't have a question, but.
Motions?
Yep, unless there's other questions and just, uh, to be specific, this is just for the annexation and plan of services. Which the zoning will actually come after that, but I'll make a motion that we approve the annexation petition and plan of services, subject to the staff comments. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And just to make sure, did that include, the staff comments, will that include the whole fire, fire department thing?
Yes, yeah, there were three conditions, it was the, the emergency access and then the Laurel Stone connection.
Just wanna make sure, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, item E is the zoning application for approximately sixteen point three acres located along Emery Road to be zoned RS 10 simultaneous with annexation. Jeremy Tabor is the applicant, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is for the same property, it's requested to be zoned RS 10 simultaneous with annexation. Uh, RS 10 being, uh, for single-family residential lots with a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. The surrounding, uh, land uses and zoning, as I mentioned, to the north and to the west is the Pebble Creek subdivision, which is part of a planned residential development. Pebble Creek is, has varying lot sizes, I think the smallest ones are about eight thousand square feet. The largest ones, uh, along the creek are, are much. feet, the largest ones along the creek are, are much longer up, are much larger upwards of 15,000, 20,000 square feet, with an average of probably about 10,000 or 12,000 square feet throughout the subdivision. To the southeast of the property is the Laurel Stone subdivision, that's also a PRD, that's for, um, single-family attached homes on their own lots of record. Section 1 was just recorded, and, and you've probably seen some of the homes in Laurel Stone being constructed. Directly to the east of the subject property is Oak View Drive, which is a county single-family residential street. And further to the south is, in this area here, is section 2 of the Laurel Stone subdivision, which is right across the creek from, um, from the, uh, subject property, and of course, Oakland Middle School further to the, to the southwest. The applicants are requesting RS-10 zoning. Mr. Taber wishes to develop the northern portion, for the, for the time being, the property owners would hold on to the southern portion and have no intentions of, of developing that in the near future. I think it would be, uh, Mr. Taber's desire to be able to, at some point, acquire that property for a, for an additional section of his proposed subdivision, but at this point, that's not, that's not imminent. And that is, you know, one of the reasons why we requested the, uh, the connection with the first phase as a condition of the annexation, is because the development of that southern property is, is not, is not imminent. The concept plan that Mr. Taber and his design team have shared with us shows around 36 single-family residential lots, that's just a concept plan that's subject to change, that could be slightly more, slightly less, depending on the, on the design, especially now that the, that connection will be, will be worked into the design. The, uh, as I mentioned, Sandstone Circle and Laurel Stone Drive both stub into the Watkins property, and the city does not envision a direct roadway connection to that curve in Emery Road. The major transportation plan shows a future three-lane recommended improvement to take Osborne Lane all the way to Last Cassis Pike, however, that's a, that's a long-term improvement, and, uh, there's no timeframe at present for that, for that proposed extension. A neighborhood meeting was held on May 24th, as I mentioned, the connection to Laurel Stone Drive was one of the, was one of the main concerns, as well as blasting, um, construction traffic, and then preserving existing trees along the perimeter of property lines. The Murphysboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan shows that the, recommends that the property develop as suburban residential land use character, and RS-10 is one of the zoning classifications that's consistent with the suburban residential land use character, recommends a density of about two to three and a half dwelling units per acre. And our proposed 2035 land use map is also consistent with our, with our adopted 2035 land use map that shows suburban residential as, as the recommended land use character. Staff is supportive of the zoning request for the following reasons, it is, it is consistent with our, both our existing and proposed, um, future land use map, comprehensive plan, it is, uh, consistent with respect to the fact that it is within, um, the service infill line on the proposed future land use map. And also, the RS-10 zoning district allows for single-family residential, residential uses, uh, which are, uh, which would be compatible with the existing single-family residential uses surrounding the subject property. The applicant, Mr. Taber, is here, if you have any questions for him, as is his, uh, representative of his design team, Mr. Pandorf, and the planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter, and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. Be happy to answer any questions.
Can I just ask, Mr. Blomley, so when you said they're looking at approximately 36 single-family homes, are you talking about the entire section, or just the northern section?
Just the northern parcel. So, Mr. Taber has the northern parcel under contract, and, um, his concept plan shows roughly 36 single-family lots on that northern, on that northern portion.
Mm-hmm. But we are looking at a zoning RS-10 for the entire 16.3 acres?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
I guess I'll go ahead and ask my rental question. Jeremy, are you willing to put any kind of rental stipulations on that neighborhood?
Uh, so, I, I think so, uh, we, we, I'm, I'm like the last developer, I'm kind of a personal property thing, I hate to tell somebody that, that buys a house, you, you're not allowed to rent it out, um, but maybe with a time limit, or something like your...
Two-year thing?
Something like that.
Okay.
I think we'd be open to that, we certainly have no, uh, we have no intention of selling this as a, as a rental, you know, development or anything like that.
Yeah, I don't want to take anybody's property rights, I'll just put a little buffer in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The corporate buyer, the, the corporate buyer is, is one of the biggies too, and that one's a little, I think that one's even easier to kind of swallow than...
If we do the homeowner's thing, then the corporate buyer can't do it, 'cause he's not gonna sell, he's not gonna live in it.
Yeah, so that's, that's a biggie.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
And, and I would say, since this is, this is bulk zoning, um, we're a little bit more hamstrung as far as putting conditions upon bulk zoning as we would a planned development.
If he puts it into CCRs, though, then...
But we don't necessarily, yeah, okay. All right, we'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding the zoning application for this property.
J.T. Sherrill again, 2538 Sandstone Circle. A lot of the residents from last week's meeting felt comfortable with the development overall. There were some contingencies that Mr. Taber communicated, um, that, uh, as far as square footage limitations, the assurances of that the buildings would be comparable to the adjacent subdivision, all those things, I think, most residents were comfortable with. The only thing that, um, me personally, I back up to this development, uh, it is not gonna be part of our neighborhood, I think that, um, based on the condition of the current land, it is high rock, I mean, it's just nothing but cedars and pines all the way down to the creek. The creek is a beautiful piece of property that has attracted a lot of people to buy lots in that area. My concern is that once they're gonna start developing, that they're gonna have no choice but to, whatever buffers put in place, it's gonna have to get demodded out, grading's gonna have to be redone. I think that personally is, from a residential, from a resident standpoint, we would like some sort of planted buffer, uh, as well as any grading to kind of distinguish between the two properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill. Anybody else? We will close the public hearing. Other comments, questions, concerns regarding the zoning application?
So, um, he asked about the buffering, just so we're clear here, um, it, it would be up to the developer as to whether or not they chose to do that, because these are, these, um, zones are similar, so there's not gonna be any buffering requirement on his end to do anything, it would be my understanding, correct?
That's correct, not by ordinance, and I think that was one of the things that was, that was raised, um, at the, at the neighborhood meeting, and, um, you know, what I, what, what I encouraged Mr. Taber and his design team to do was to, was to begin looking at perhaps how they could, um, yeah, and some, one of the, one of the things that we've seen in, in similar situations is, you know, where there is existing vegetation along a property line would be to look and see how their proposed development would impact that, that tree line, and perhaps when the preliminary, preliminary plat comes through, that a tree preservation with tree protection measures could be, could be, or tree preservation easement with, um, with plans that have tree protection measures could be, um, could be included. Um, so, and I don't know if that's something that, that Mr. Pandorf or Mr. Taber could address.
Yeah, so Benny Pandorf with Huddleston Steel, representing Jeremy Taber. This did come up in the neighborhood meeting, and we were in agreement that we would provide both the preservation of existing tree lines and adding any landscaping that would be required to, to preserve the integrity between his neighborhood and any existing neighborhoods.
Was there a sp- a specific width of, of property you're talking about, I'm assuming on that north-south line there, um, was there some specific width that you guys might have looked at in your preliminary drawing to see that, you know, you can leave 10 feet and it won't mess up your conceptual drawing, or...
We have not come up with the exact width yet, but there, there will be some, there will be some buffer area for some planting, yeah, we could set the width, I guess, if, if, if needed.
I don't know, I...
I'm not exactly sure how much we would necessarily need. I told them, I, I love trees too, so I'm happy to keep as many of the existing trees, there's a pretty good existing tree line there now, uh, so we'll keep as much as we possibly can, I just don't, I don't want to get in a position where we, you know, where we have to put a ditch or something and there's a tree there, so, um, you know, I don't, I don't know h- how far from the property line we can guarantee there's trees, it's pretty thick through there, so there, we're gonna be able to save trees, and I, I committed that we'd save as many as possible. And then if we need to plant some back to, uh, i- if we do have to take anything out, we can, we can do that, too.
One thing I'll mention, it's not about the buffer, just, but for, uh, access to Laurel Stone, um, uh, that the council has already designated and funded the widening of Last Cassis all the way to DeJarnet, and Mr. Houston may wanna hear that, I don't see him back there, he may have already split on us, but, um, you know, we've already designated that with part of that MED project money to get all the way at least to DeJarnet, so as far as getting people out to, to Laurel Stone, out to 96 and down to town, that's gonna be what I think we're talking about, a five-lane, a five-lane road from DeJarnet all the way to, not Clark, Middle Tennessee Boulevard, um, there, so, anyway, it's just a note, just, that should help, some of that.
I had a nice, long conversation with Mr. Houston, and I've got his cell phone number, so I can, I can call him and fill him in on that.
Hopefully that'll help.
Any other comments or questions regarding the zoning application?
If there aren't any, I'll make a mo- motion that we approve this on first reading with some information to come back to us, first of all, subject to staff comments, but also with some more clarity and detail before second reading on what you guys may be able to do, and, uh, more specifically, I don't know, is that contingent?
You'll get that at, at council level.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, we'll hear the council.
Okay.
We don't have second readings.
That's right, yeah, council level, I guess, is what I'm thinking, yeah, that's right. So, uh, just, I'll, I'll just say with the expectation that you bring to us at the council level, some more detail about the, uh, the tree buffer there.
Sure, absolutely. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on, next we have item F, it's an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 11.4 acres, located along Last Cassis Pike and East Pitts Lane. Betty Taylor, Elizabeth Taylor, and Terry Taylor are the applicants. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, our next public hearing is for the annexation of three parcels that are along Last Cassis Pike and East Pitts Lane. Two of them are along Last Cassis, and one is along East Pitts. Uh, they're the three parcels in the blue shade before you. The two parcels along Last Cassis Pike each have, uh, single-family homes on them, while the parcel along East Pitts Lane is undeveloped. Uh, the total acreage of the property is 11.4 acres, there's a companion zoning request to CF, which is the next item in public hearing on the agenda. The annexation to stu- study area does not contain any right-of-way, as the right-of-way of Last Cassis Pike in front of the subject property is already in the city limits. Uh, East Pitts Lane is a substandard road, um, uh, staff elected not to, uh, study any of the right-of-way of East Pitts Lane, uh, because of the, uh, substandard nature of, of that roadway. The plan of services that has been included in your agenda materials indicates how, uh, how services and utilities would be able to be provided to the, to the subject properties if annexed. The Water Resources Department indicated that sanitary sewer is not currently available to the subject property by its definition of available, it's a little bit to the north, up, up and across the street at the, uh, entrance to the Laurel Stone subdivision. The adjoining two streets are ditch, ditch section roadways with no sidewalks, um, and our engineering and transportation departments indicated that traffic along Last Cassis Pike is at a level of service D right now with the current average daily traffic, and it's anticipated to fall to a level of service F without the improvement shown in the major transportation plan to widen it to, to five lanes. Staff has, staff is recommending that the planning commission deny the annexation and zoning of the subject properties for the following reasons. Uh, the requested zone, and these are the reasoning, the reasons, um, for the annexation and the zoning, uh, we've included in both the annexation and zoning staff reports. The requested zone change to CF is in direct conflict with both the existing, uh, adopted, uh, future land use map of the comprehensive plan, as well as the proposed, uh, future land use map, um, that is currently being considered by the planning commission. Per the Water Resources Department's definition of available, sanitary sewer is not available to the subject property. Number three, it's staff's position that infill occurring within the proposed infill service line, uh, and this property is located outside of the, um, infill service line on our proposed future land use map. So it's staff's position that infill occurring within the proposed infill service line should occur first before considering annexing beyond that line in order to maximize the use of existing road and utility infrastructure. Uh, number four, Last Cassis Pike is currently experiencing high peak hour traffic volumes that should not be further exacerbated by potentially more intense city development due to the provision of city sewer. Improvements to widen Last Cassis Pike, uh, from two to five lanes, um, which are expected to exceed a million dollars in cost, um, for this section of Last Cassis Pike, are not planned anywhere in the near term to help offset the impact of further development in this area. Uh, and Mr. Huddleston, uh, may have additional information regarding, um, Last Cassis Pike to the, from DeJarnet Lane to the south, um, I don't, I don't have information on that, Mr. Huddleston may be able to elaborate on what Mr. LaLance was referring to earlier. Number five, any annexation beyond the proposed infill service line may unduly trigger additional annexation requests on the easterly side of Last Cassis Pike, which have the above issues. Mr. McKnight's already fielded several calls, uh, along the east side of Last Cassis Pike, um, for areas that are outside of our, um, proposed infill service line, and as a matter of fact, when, um, our staff was putting up the annexation signs, um, a member of the adjacent church, uh, approached the, approached, uh, our staff member about the potential of the church being annexed into the city limits as well, even though it's not within the, uh, proposed infill service line. Did a rough calculation of the, of the properties along Last Cassis Pike that could, that could potentially be annexed in the future, um, outside of the infill service line, and this would be the stretch between Twin Oak Drive and Compton Road, and this isn't including, uh, this is primarily properties fronting on Last Cassis Pike, and there was about 120 acres of, of, uh, land outside the infill service line between Twin Oak and Compton Road. Number six, staff is not supportive of, uh, bulk zoning requests on the fringe of the city where established development patterns do not exist, and potential conflicting uses could occur and negatively impact surrounding uses. Also of concern to staff is that there are two single-family homes on the subject property that, uh, there are no plans to... property that there are no plans to demolish that, demolish those homes upon annexation. And if the commercial fringe zoning were to be approved, those homes could potentially be retrofitted for, for commercial uses if the, if the zoning applicant's plans do not come to fruition. So, for those reasons, staff is not supportive of the, either the annexation or the zoning request. We need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and then, and then formulate a recommendation to the city council.
Mr. Blomley, the list you just read, is it in our, was it a part of what we?
Yes, ma'am. It's in the staff report.
Where, where is it? What, what page on the staff report is it?
It is, it's the second page of the 4F staff report. I've got it on page 125 of the PDF.
I was looking for it in the plan of services.
I'm going to play stupid here. So, can you give me, shed some more light on what you mean by infill service line?
Sure, sure. So, in drafting our future land use map, what we have attempted to do and what was proposed to you several months ago was to, was to create an infill service line that we see as, or that we envision as, as what the city can annex and within the, the remaining horizon. There's 13 years left on the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan, 2022 to 2035. It was, it was proposed in the, in that future land use map that anything outside of the infill service line, we weren't fully closing the door on, on annexing property outside the infill service line, but that it would take additional study and we would need to look at, we would need to look at an area as a whole as opposed to doing one-off annexations outside of that infill service line.
And when you say area as a whole, how would you define that?
You know, I would think perhaps looking at the east side of, of Last Cassis Pike from Twin Oak Drive to Compton Road would, would constitute the size area that we were thinking of, that we had in mind when we were proposing the, the infill service line. And I think we, we were, we were tasked with, you know, coming up with kind of a way to minimize the number of annexations that were, that were pushing our, our city limits and our provision of services further and further out. And so, the infill service line was a tool that we included with the proposed future land use map to give the planning commission and city council another tool in their toolbox to, to review requests for annexation.
And if I understand correctly, Mr. Blomley, and I think hopefully Mr. Halliburton remembers this, I don't know how long ago it was, but we were tasked with coming up with the urban growth boundary. Remember, we went out on bus trips and we went to different, all the areas all the way around decided, but Laverne, Eagleville, Smyrna, and Murfreesboro all had to come up with an urban growth boundary. And we had this urban growth boundary and we were going to annex within our urban growth boundary and it couldn't overlap with Smyrna's or Laverne's or Eagleville's. That was our urban growth boundary. Now, if, if I am understanding correctly, that line is now what we did with this most recent proposed future land use map, that urban growth boundary is now our infill line?
No, the infill service line does not change the adopted urban growth boundary. So, so the-
Are they two different lines?
They are, they are. The urban growth boundary is, is the adopted growth plan for the, for the county as a whole. And all municipalities and the county had to come together and adopt that. If I'm, that even predates my tenure here, so it's been a long time.
No, it does.
But, and I think it, I think it takes, I think it takes all the municipalities and the county to come back together in order to amend that, if I'm not mistaken. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Hankins and Mr. Robes?
It certainly takes the, if we were going to go one direction, I'm not, if we were going to go towards Smyrna, I don't know that we'd have to have Eagleville's consent to that. But certainly any, you know, the city and the county would have to agree to it if we were going to expand something. Obviously, if we were going to take over part of Smyrna's area, they would have to agree. I think it's-
But, but if they're not the same line, okay, then the infill line has to be within our urban growth-
That's correct, that's correct.
So, that infill line now is this kind of area around Murfreesboro that we're trying to infill before we spread out beyond it. Is that what we're trying to do?
That's correct, that's correct. And, and, and that area, now bear in mind, our, our comprehensive plan is, is, has 13 years left on its, on its planning horizon. So, we're not, we're not saying that we won't ever go beyond that infill service line. What we're saying is that in the time that the comprehensive plan has left before we draft a brand-new one, that this is the area that, that we propose for the city to grow in, grow into. Like I said, that's not to say, and we've written this into the plan, that's not to say that, that we can't change that in, within those 13 years. But it would, but we wanted to kind of put language in there that it's not, that it, it's a change where we would have to look at the area on a, on a more holistic level rather than just getting single applications to deviate from that.
Madam Chair, Commission, it's also very important to know that this has not been adopted or approved. This is just a tool that we're using to be more consistent with annexations within the planning department. So, I don't want it to be presented as though the service infill line has been adopted. It, it is a tool within the planning department we're currently using. It has been proposed for adoption, but it has not. So, I want to make sure that we're not presenting it as though it is something that has been adopted and is, and is being approved to use. We use it as a tool to make sure we're being consistent with annexation requests, the service infill line.
Yeah, and I certainly didn't want to give the impression that it, that it's been adopted. It is, it is, it is proposed and we are using it as a, as a tool.
Matthew, is, is this representing the infill service line?
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, I, I've got-
The annexation report?
Yeah, I've actually got it pulled up. We can pull up my computer. So, you can see that, and this is the proposed future land use map that is on our website right now. And this black dashed line represents the proposed service infill line. The applicant's properties are here. And that, that, the Last Cassis Pike right-of-way is, is where we have drawn that. So, that the east side, excuse me, the west side, the west side is, is within the service infill line and the east side is not.
I'll just make this statement. It's hard to make a decision based off something that's not passed yet.
But you're saying currently there's, there are no city, we, we don't have any city properties on the east side of Last Cassis. Is there anything in the city limits right there?
That's correct. So, you, you see the, the solid line here is the current city limits. So, it comes around here and we do take in the right-of-way of Last Cassis Pike right around Laurelstone, I believe. But nothing on the, nothing on the east side is in the city, in, currently in the city limits.
And all those light blue areas that we're seeing in there, are, are those mostly, what, undeveloped? Are they not in the city? Or do you know what the light blue is?
These right here?
Yes, sir.
That's in the future land use map, that's, the light blue is coded as public institutional.
Oh, I see. Those are the different-
Right, that's Oakland High and that's Oakland Middle and John Pitterd right there.
All right, yeah.
Did, did you say we did not have sewage capacity in that area and we don't have the easements for the sewage out that direction?
No, I, I think it, what I said was that it's not available per the department, per the Water Resources Department's definition of available. So, it would take the developer acquiring easements and extending the sewer from the Laurelstone Drive, current sewer stub, to connect to their proposed development. That's, that's a matter of, of acquiring easements and physical construction. I think the capacity is, is there, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Well, we're still going to have a public hearing on this. We can continue to ask questions. It's all right, everybody. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the annexation petition and plan of services and ask if anybody would like to come forward to speak either for or against this annexation petition.
My name is John Harney. I live at 6748 West Gum Road. And I'm here tonight both representing the owners of the property, the Taylor family, and also the potential buyer of this, which is Mercyboro Medical Clinic. Joey P. is here, that's the CEO for the medical clinic, and certainly he may have some comments to make. The objections that have been raised are sort of mixed between annexation issues and, and zoning issues. So, may actually have permission to get up here and speak twice, but-
Exactly, you can.
To talk about it. And I appreciate Mr. McKnight saying that, you know, the land use plan hasn't been adopted yet and it's still, so to speak, a document in, in work. You know, 96 is a major arterial and we understand that no annexation is happening beyond 96. I think this is, this annexation ought to be considered on the merits of what it is. If we were coming in, bringing in a 300-lot subdivision to jump 96, I think it would be viewed in a whole different light than the fact this is something we're asking to be annexed to bring services, medical services to that, to this area on the north side of town. I think we all know, medical has sort of migrated from where the hospital used to be around the university and how and all that, now has migrated across Broad Street to Medical Center, and now even migrated further with the explosion of the new medical out at Veterans and 840. I think the vision Mercyboro Medical Clinic had several years ago is rather than make everybody drive in to the middle of town to their big clinic that's behind the hospital, that it would be more strategic to put their services out where the rooftops are. They built the medical clinic out on South Church a few years ago. They're building the medical clinic right now on the far west edge of town, out at, at Shores and Veterans. And they looked at this side of town and say, why don't we, because medical has moved away from this area, put a clinic out on the northeast side of town? I can get into the traffic issue, but I'd rather do that on the, on the zoning side. To address the question you had about sewer, Commissioner, we've already acquired the easements to pick up. The sewer manhole now exists in Laurelstone Drive, right at 96. We've worked with Water and Sewer Department to make sure the inver, that manhole is low enough. We've already acquired the easements to come under Last Cassis and come through two property owners from the north to, to bring sewer to this property. And that's going to be the responsibility of the owner. That's part of the, of this transaction. So, sewer is available. I think that you can check the Water and Sewer Department, but I think they've confirmed that the capacity is there. So, the sewer has already been looked at and, and dealt with. Again, jumping 96, my understanding right now, the way sewer works in Murfreesboro is unless you're annexed into the city, the city's not going to provide you sewer service. So, if you consider this annexation, it's not automatically saying, it opens up Pandora's box for everybody else to come in and say, I want to be annexed and I want sewer. That's the right y'all've got each time to consider the merits of whether it should be annexed or shouldn't. But certainly you're not obligated to provide sewer service for, for the properties along 96 that, that aren't in the city unless you bring them in. I think that's the standard policy now is that you don't provide out-of-city sewer. The rest of this I probably would, would want to address when we get to the zoning part of it. But I wanted to just answer these two or three questions for right now.
Mr. Harney, could I ask you a question about the two houses and not having an agreement to tear the two houses down so we don't get stuck in this quandary if something ever happens and we don't have these two houses being used as commercial?
Well, I think I could let probably Mr. P., Representative Mercyboro Medical Clinic, address that.
Okay.
I think it's, they wouldn't be making this investment with the intention of letting these stay residential houses for the future. I mean, their whole purpose tonight is to build, somewhere between 18 and $20 million facility on the property, to build a clinic on the northeast side of town to, to serve the residents on the north side of town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harney. Anybody else like to speak?
Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, thank you for having me. My name is Joey P. I'm the CEO of Murfreesboro Medical Clinic. I live at 1501 Cripple Creek Road. I would ask for support for this annexation and ultimately the rezoning as CF. Our plan a few years ago, and at first I just wanted to say thank you for not asking me to define the difference between a medical office and a clinic. We may, we may have never gotten to this point.
I thought about asking you to come up.
I thought about standing up and like, no, no, I don't want to, I don't want to get into that. But the, the numbers that I hear are staggering when we say 29 people a day are moving into Rutherford County. Well, what that means is every 100 days, I hope one of those people is a doctor. Because those 3,000 people coming in, that's essentially a medical practice. And so, MMC is the largest provider of, of physician services in this county. We're trying to meet that demand as best we can. We had stayed at our Highland Avenue location as long as we could till we ultimately outgrew that. It's a wonderful police station. I think the shooting range is where my office used to be, the, all the bullet holes there from the, dodging those from the doctors. I think it just made sense, right? But, you know, we built our Garrison Drive location and it's full. And so, we opened up the Shelbyville Pike location. We were a little bit on the outskirts on the west side of 231 Shelbyville Pike going out of town. And the, the residential area to the north of us is converting into, the, the residential signs are there, or excuse me, the commercial development signs are there along Shelbyville Pike. We're going into that West Lawn Development with a large 75,000 square foot medical office building right next to those rooftops that are part of that West Lawn subdivision now. And we're looking at the, the east side of town coming back. I grew up out on Hallsville Pike. And I know when we moved our clinic, my mother complained about having to go to the other side of the world to get medical care. And now that we've had Shelbyville Pike open for two years, the, the success that that clinic has had in serving people in that community on that side of town where they're not having to traverse Murfreesboro to get to even lab work or a chest x-ray or, or an ultrasound. We would plan something similar for this particular location on, on Last Cassis. We looked at several parcels as we were considering and ultimately deciding on this one. The others just weren't that suitable coming out, again, for the size of the, the parcel we're going to build. We, we found the, the Taylors and their property and, and saw the potential of what it could be. When y'all were debating the Georgetown Square, I forget what the actual development, Madam Chair, mentioned specifically, bringing services to the community, to the neighborhoods. That's what we're trying to envision. Yeah, we don't need 11 acres for, for our clinic, but that's what the property is. I would, I would like to think that that development would turn into a neighborhood, neighborhood services area. I had a meeting today with a physical therapy clinic here in Murfreesboro that has several locations, not just in Murfreesboro, but around the state of Tennessee and around the country. And I said something to him about, would you have interest in being in our Last Cassis property if we can get that building? He said, or being on the Last Cassis side, he said, we can't find suitable space over there. And I said, well, you know, I've, I've got a potential option for you to, to have a physical therapy clinic included in our building. So, what we're trying to do is, again, take the services to where the people are, to where you don't have to go all the way across town just to visit- where you don't have to go all the way across town just to visit a physician. I'd be glad to respond to any questions that you may have.
Mr. Page, just general question on the...you said on the West Lawn property, it's about 75,000 square feet?
Yes, ma'am.
And the property itself is what?
Eight and a half acres. We're building...we're utilizing for our main facility probably five of those acres. We've got three and a half acres in reserve that will more than likely be another medical office building, probably not MMC dedicated, since the announcement about the Vanderbilt Hospital. The interest in that space, and again, it's still very preliminary on the drawing board, has risen significantly.
And which...the Shelbyville Pike, is it about the same size?
It's a little smaller than what we're proposing for Las Cassis. I think the Shelbyville Pike space is about 30,000 square feet. That's the limit of the building we could get on the lot size. That's an oddly shaped lot, you know, kind of ironically, it's similarly shaped with a cutout, kind of like the shape of Utah with a panhandle, but to maximize the building space to meet the parking requirements, that's what we could do. With a little more space on Las Cassis, we would look probably for about 40,000 square feet that would ultimately be our clinic. But as far as the design, the look, the landscaping, the buffer, would look very similar to what Shelbyville Pike looks like. I would also mention that we've tried to become very iconic with the appearance of our clinics, to where when you look at a clinic, when you look at that building, you're going to look at it and say, "Oh, that's...I've seen that building, that's a Murfreesboro Medical Clinic building," and have it make sense to the public. Other questions?
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. P. Anybody else like to speak? This is on the annexation petition and plan of services. Okay?
I did want to add, the sewer is 325 feet from the property.
325. Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
So can we talk about that...Rick, or excuse me, Mr. LaLance, mentioned MED money associated with Highway 96 and...
I'll take that.
All right, go ahead.
The council had four road projects as part of the MED money. 96 was one of the four road projects that we approved as part of the MED...this first phase of MED money being used. That was one of the road projects we approved.
So what's the timeframe from being approved to actually being done?
We wanted all those shovel-ready and off-the-back quick.
What other questions we got?
I'll make this comment. I agree with Dr. P. You're bringing services out to that area. I'm more in favor of this MMC on the east side of the highway than I am the RS-10 neighborhood that we just passed on the west side. I think it's a lot better for the community. You're bringing jobs to the community, you're bringing services to the community, you're doing a lot more to the community. I don't think we should judge anything based off an infill service line that we haven't even passed yet, so I don't think that should be a basis of our discussion. I understand the...what other developments could come towards us, but we're not talking about a bunch of houses or townhomes or anything like that, we're talking about a good-sized medical office. If somebody else brings another one forward and it's got a bunch of commercial that could bring jobs, that could bring services to the community, it's probably worth looking at, too. If they're bringing us 150 townhomes on 15 acres, it's probably not worth looking at. So you've got to take each...we've...I've heard everybody up here at some point or another say we need to take each project on its own merits and its own stand. This one's got a lot of merits.
Yeah, I mean, I would...this is probably not a good analogy, but, you know, I was really for the TDK project because I felt like that there were a lot of positive merits associated with that development. We were dealing with a developer that we knew, and they wanted to do the best they could do with respects to their project, not only for themselves, but for the community. And that's exactly the way I look at this particular project. I mean, we've got a proven developer who has...there's no question that they're a positive influence in the Murfreesboro community. If you're going to make exceptions associated with certain projects, this would be at the top of my list. I understand where the city planning department is coming from, I understand that we've got to have specific guidelines with this infill service line, but it's not...even if we had passed it, I still would be for this project, and that's how strong that I feel about it. You know, if it wasn't for who the applicant is, I might even ask for this to be a planned development, so we know exactly what we're getting. But I think everybody that's part of this project has proven themselves that we know what we're going to end up with, so.
We had actually brought up the planned development when we had the vote to have the public hearing.
And right now, we're going to talk about the annexation.
I'm sorry.
And we're going to get to the zoning in a minute, because we'll discuss that.
I apologize.
Oh, no, you can certainly say it, I just want to say, well, we'll probably have a big discussion on that, too.
Look, if there's other...if there's no other questions, I'll move for approval.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Want abstention? Moving on to the zoning application. We have a zoning application for approximately 11.4 acres located along Las Cassis Pike and East Pitts Lane to be zoned CF simultaneous with annexation. Murfreesboro Medical Clinic is the applicant. It says CF, is that correct?
CF, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The applicants have requested CF zoning simultaneous with annexation. The subject property is...let me zoom out so you can see the surrounding land uses and zoning. The aforementioned Laurelstone Development is zoned PRD. I've described what that is developing as. The majority of the surrounding land uses along East Pitts are single-family residential in nature in the unincorporated county. There are...there's a church directly adjacent to the subject property at the northeast corner of Las Cassis and East Pitts. As I mentioned, there are two single-family homes on the subject property. There's a Dollar General and a gas station a little bit further up the road on Las Cassis Pike as well. The request is for CF, and one of the things that I did want to mention is that the applicant will have a PowerPoint presentation in a few minutes with details of the proposed development. Just wanted to preface that by saying that they are requesting bulk zoning, CF zoning, so none of those details that are in that PowerPoint are anything that we can condition zoning on. They're showing what their intentions are, but the zoning request is for CF bulk zoning and not as a planned development. So the details that they show in their request would not be binding. But they did mention that they...or they have submitted a concept plan that does show 39,000-square-foot medical clinic, as Mr. P. mentioned, as well as several out parcels along both Las Cassis and East Pitts. The adopted 2035 future land use map, the adopted one I have on the screen before you, it does show that this area is recommended to be developed as the suburban estate land use character, which is the least dense residential zoning classification in the existing 2035 future land use map. The suburban estate zone...or land use character recommends residential...single-family residential uses at less than one dwelling unit per acre. The proposed future land use map, we've discussed it being outside the service infill line, which means that it's represented on the proposed future land use map as future study Staff would recommend denial of the zoning request for the various reasons that I read off earlier, and the applicant has been advised of staff's position throughout this process, but has elected to move forward to the Planning Commission with their application. I'd like to invite Mr. Rob Mulchin with SEC, who will be making a PowerPoint presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mulchin.
Good evening. One second here, get this thing pulled up.
If you exit or escape out of that, it'll be pulled up on the taskbar.
Good evening, Rob Mulchin, SEC, here, tonight on behalf of MMC. I'm just going to give you a quick little brief presentation. As Matthew talked about, we are asking for bulk CF zoning, but I wanted to kind of give you an overview of kind of what our intent is for the property in regards to the development as we move forward in this. I'll kind of go through the first couple of slides rather quickly, since these are more or less kind of background we've already spoken about during the annexation and part of the rezoning process. So as we all know where the property is in relationship to the site, you know, it's on the eastern side of Las Cassis, just the north side of East Pitts. As you can see, as Matthew talked about, the zoning classifications, you've got Laurelstone, the PRD across the street, and to the north, you've got two county zoning districts up there, which are the commercial districts for the Dollar General and the gas station, and also residential subdivision to the north on that side. More or less, you can also see the boundaries of the city limits right now on the west side of the Las Cassis. Kind of talking about sanitary sewer, water, and electric services, you can see here in the map, there is the Laurelstone in the upper right-hand corner of the development up there, that is where we have the existing manhole right now for sanitary sewers that we talked about, is about 300 and some feet away from getting to the property, which are...we've already acquired the easements to make that happen. There's also eventually going to be a future sewer stub that will be part of Laurelstone that will provide another connection point back against 96 for another future connection in regards to sewer availability in that location as well on that side. We've got electric on both Las Cassis and Pitts. There's also 20-inch water line on our...on the eastern side or our side of Las Cassis for water service to the property, also an 8-inch line along East Pitts as well in regards to the property that butts through East Pitts. Again, in general, more or less topographic flow of the property moves from the northeastern to the southwestern sides, will be able to provide stormwater detention, and then that water will go under Las Cassis and goes through the Laurelstone subdivision back to Bushman Creek. Just some quick images of the property, this is actually looking to the heart of the Taylor property on that side, so you can kind of see it's just agrarian. Got a couple, two...the Taylors have two different residential structures, one for Mr. Taylor and his mother's property on that side. This is one of the properties on the other side of Pitts. This is the Bethlehem Church on the corner, and these are a couple of views of Las Cassis as it is today. This is looking from the entrance of Laurelstone back towards what would be the northeast. You can see off on the right-hand side, there's the gas station, and then off to the right-hand side of the image, Dollar General store located there. And this is again a view looking southwest on...at Pitts Lane, looking south, you can see the church across the street. One thing to note in regards to this is that the turn lanes for the Laurelstone subdivision have already been put in place. I'll speak a little bit more about our improvements in regards to some of the things we're going to need to do to Las Cassis as part of the development if this was to move forward. Kind of what I want to go through is the how we plan to develop the property, and this is kind of...we talked about the iconicness of MMC, this is kind of the motif that we're looking for from an architectural standpoint for the character of MMC moving forward. This is more or less the architectural character we're looking for with this building on this property as well. You can see we're looking at about 11 acres, we're asking for CF zoning on this, we're looking at to divide the property into about four different CF zone properties. The main lot, as you can see, which is the main lot, which is in the upper northeastern corner of the property, this is where we're looking at putting the MMC building as ancillary parking on that side. The other will be a two-story, 39,000-square-foot structure, more or less, on that side. We'll be looking at the three remaining properties as eventual CF properties for future development on that side. So just kind of an overview to kind of give you an idea about what we're intending the property to look like as we move forward. Again, talking about architecture and talking about what MMC is looking for in regards to their character, their buildings on this side, we're looking for a well-defined main entrance with a port of cachet, kind of look at the front of that, so you can drop off patrons, we've dropped off with a sheltered area, so you wouldn't get any rain on it if it was a rainy day. Multiple building planes in regards to the architecture, so you've got a really good character in regards to movement of the architecture. We're looking at the maximum in the CF zone is 45 feet in regards to building heights, so that's what we're looking towards as being the maximum building height for this two-story structure. This will meet all the city's design guidelines, and elevations will be varied with a number of different types of masonry materials for the exterior elevations, along with windows and such. This is just going to give you some character about the actual...so the top image is actually the front door, you can see the covered entrance there. The backside of the building, as you can see on that way, which is actually the side that faces the adjacent properties to the east, and then the side views of the building in regards to the building itself. Access in regards to this, we're looking at mainly for the MMC side of things, we're looking at a main access point back out to Las Cassis, what we talked about in regards to turn lanes and such. We're going to extend the turn lanes that are part of the Laurelstone development down, so more or less you'll have a kind of a switchback onto the north of our entrance, you'll have a kind of switchback, left-hand turn lanes that allow for left-hand turns for traffic moving south...moving towards the southeast towards town, to have a dedicated left-hand turn lane to turn into the access point there. That'll all be in conjunction with the improvements that have been made so far with Laurelstone on that side. As we kind of move into the property itself, the two commercial fringe properties that we have facing on the Las Cassis on either side of the main accessway won't have an access point back to Las Cassis. They'll have access back to the shared common driveway, which leads back to the MMC building on the backside, so somewhere along that throat, leading back to the MMC building on that side of their property, will be a shared access point for both of those properties, so there won't actually be any more traffic being delegated back out to Las Cassis, it'll be directed solely to that access point that we have that will share for those three properties on that side. And then on the property to the south, that's along Pitts, we'll be looking at an access point or two, depending on how that property develops out, in relationship to getting back to East Pitts, is that being its access point to allow for it to get back to Las Cassis Pike, and then movement to the northeast and to the southwest back towards town. Again, a little blow-up kind of showing, we'll have three lanes, you know, two lanes leaving out, so you have a right and left out of the property on that side, one lane in, and you can also see the turn lane maneuvers on Las Cassis Pike to allow for that dedicated left-hand turn for traffic heading into town to turn into the facility on that side. And then we'll taper it back down heading towards Pitts, so it goes back to the two lanes before we get back to Dejarnet, where it will be improved with the MED money that we've spoken about in that regard, that'll be part of the improvement. For the money being spent will be the intersection of Dejarnet being upgraded to handle the traffic for the schools and then all the adjacent traffic coming in from the Las Cassis area on that side. We'll also be looking at incorporating, since this is going to be zoned bulk CF, we'll be looking at the regards to buffers that will be required, so along the peripheries we'll be providing a 10-foot-wide type A landscape buffer, which is in conjunction to a CF property of budding adjacent residential properties or commercial properties in this area, so that's where we're putting those 10-foot type A buffers along all those edges of the property. Appreciate your time, consideration of our project, and I'm willing to answer any questions now, or any of the questions that...any of the point.
So were you...the lot on the back off of Pitts Lane, I don't understand, were you saying it's going to have access out onto Pitts Lane, or is it coming back to the front to get it?
It's having access out to Pitts Lane. Using Pitts Lane back to the intersection where you have Old Pitts and Pitts Lane coming together at Las Cassis right here.
Are you planning on making any improvements to Pitts Lane?
Pitts Lane right now, as Matthew's talked about, is a substandard roadway, I think if the pavement surface, if I'm not correct, is 18 to 22 foot wide in various places coming through there, so it is substandard on that side. I think when the site plan would come through for that parcel, when that was developed, I think their probably...you know, staff will request for those improvements to be made at Pitts Lane in relationship to that property.
And is it...it's still a county road right now? And, okay, is it, it's still a county road right now, East Pitts Lane?
That's correct, and we did not include the right-of-way of East Pitts Lane in our, in our annexation study.
All right, any other questions before we open the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding the zoning.
Again, Joey P., 1501 Cripple Creek Road. The CF request is consistent with the zoning we have at our Shelbyville Pike location on, on the south side of town. We felt like that that would give us the, the opportunity we needed to, to develop the, the building we need for our own purposes. I think as we think about those out parcels that you, that you mentioned, the one facing East Pitts, we've talked about, should there be some connectivity that would take it back to that central road? That's ultimately to be determined. But I think, again, whatever businesses develop there, those are going to be our neighbors too. And I think about one of the other parcels, we looked up just back in toward town from, from where we are, our, in our front yard would have been a liquor store, a vape shop, a couple of fast food restaurants, and, and things that typically don't promote a, a healthy lifestyle that as medical professionals, our, our group really want to do. So a lot of the businesses that I think a lot of the neighbors would have concerns about would, would not be something that we would want to develop in that area either, especially if they're going to have to drive past that, that store, that, that place to, to get to our property. As, as far as the residential houses, the agreement that we have with the Taylors is they can stay there until we get ready to start construction, and at that point, those houses would be removed in some way, shape, or form. If you saw the, the site plan, the, the entrance roadway was essentially going through one of the houses. As far as timing, we have a lease that is expiring from Dr. Langworthy and Eller's Practice that joined us about a year ago. Part of the timing for this would be coincide, to coincide with the, with the expiration of that lease, which I think is at the end of 2024. To have a 40,000 square foot building available for occupancy by that time, that means we're going to have to start construction in about a year. That gives us 18 months. Joey Ryan with Dow Smith Construction is here as well. He may kill me for saying that, but I think 18 months may, may be sufficient for 40,000. That's about what it's taking us to build a 75,000 square foot building at West Lawn. Again, the, the commercial zoning, I didn't want to do commercial highway or anything, but you, you know what the building's going to look like. The, the one on South Church is a, probably a closer representation just because of the sheer size, but as far as the appearance, it's going to look, what's on, look like what is on Garrison Drive and what's currently under construction at West Lawn. I'd be glad to respond again to any questions.
I, I will ask a question while you're up there.
Yes, ma'am.
So is MMC developing this entire parcel, or are you developing the back corner?
We're ultimately going to develop the entire parcel. But the, the impetus for us doing that is that back corner, because we need it more quickly. Once that happens, the economics of the project are taken care of, so we're not in a hurry to, to build spec buildings and rush to get other tenants and, and other things in those, in, in those parcels. We want it to, like the city, to develop in, in a manner that is conducive to the area, you know, what businesses make sense. Is it, you know, Charlie Pitts Hair Salon, they didn't mention him, he's just right up the road between East Pitts and Dejarnet. Would it make more sense to have hair salons, other facilities like that? The investment shops, realtors' offices, any, anything like that that, that again, adds value to the area that people aren't having to drive all over town to, to get those services, if they can get them closer to their home.
Anybody else like to speak? Okay. Thought we had another speaker. We'll close the public hearing. What other questions, comments?
I personally would rather that southeastern track empty through the main drive instead of on to East Pitts.
Agree 100%.
I, I think, you know, it's hard, we've gotten really spoiled, I think, with the number of planned developments we've had come through over the last 10 years even. And it, it's, it's just harder to think about a bulk zoning, especially on commercial property. So... I don't know why I had it in my head you were asking for CH. CF is at least a lot better than the CH. And I guess you chose to put your really beautiful building on the back corner and not out where everybody could see it. Yes, sir.
It was determined that we're the destination, where, where people are going to be, be coming to. You know, as, as, again, I live on the east side of town, I, I would love a nice restaurant out that, that way. I frequent the Boulevard frequently, and I, I wish there were more nice sit-down dining establishments, and, you know, I could see that. As, as far as the access, we, we can fix that through the, through the site plan to, to allow some, the continuation of that entrance road around to that back lot that, that faces East Pitts as well. Because again, you know, as, as I'm looking at this pulled up on the screen, that I, I assume that's what y'all are seeing as well, and just, you know, a detention pond, green space between us and the church. Again, I think it gives a lot of opportunity for some, some beautiful developments out in that area. But yeah, the, putting ours in the back was, we felt was a better maximization of the site, because again, we're going to be the destination that most people are coming to, to visit on a daily basis.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, concerns? Motion?
Was there a neighborhood meeting? What, what did the neighbors think?
We have not had a neighborhood meeting at this point. I guess the Taylors, but like you mentioned,
secured the right-of-way of the two neighbors adjacent to the north to get the sewer. As far as the others, we've had no outreach, and there's no opposition here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Chair Taylor, I live at 2664 Last Cassis Road, and we did not have a public meeting, but feedback I'm getting from all the neighbors, there's no problem. And I did talk to the people that we got the sewer easement from, there's no problem, they're the next-door neighbors. I think everything's good.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I have personally talked to one of the adjacent neighbors. And there was no, no problems at all on, on East Pitts.
Nothing else, I'll make a motion for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstention? One abstention. Thank y'all very much. Sorry. Yes. Okay, next we will be moving on to staff reports and other business, where we have at least four items. First, Mr. Ives is going to present for us a mandatory referral to consider the purchase of property at 103 Southeast Broad Street. City of Murfreesboro Legal Department is the applicant. Good evening, Mr. Ives.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to get up and stretch. We have, if we could bring up onto the screen, the, there we go. A few meetings ago, we brought to you the proposal to acquire the property that's over, over here, in order to construct a right turn lane coming down Church onto Broad. As the plans for that have developed, there's a need for a right turn lane coming off of Broad and up to Church. That, this lot that's before you tonight also is a very small lot, and once we take property for a right turn lane, sidewalks, and other intersection-type improvements, we really need to take the whole lot. So we would ask that your approval, recommendation, recommendation to council for the city to go ahead and proceed with acquisition of that lot as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the mandatory referral, subject to any and all staff comments. A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ives. Next, we have a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of a drainage easement located on property along Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. And Pradeep Agnatori is the applicant, something close to that. Ms. Kerr, how are you this evening?
Thank you, Chair Jones, members of the planning commission. This easement abandonment request is from Huddleston Steel Engineering for Pradeep Agnatori. The subject property is located along the east side of Robert Rose Drive and north of Medical Center Parkway. Planning Commission is being asked to consider abandoning a 207-foot-long portion of an existing variable drainage easement on property to be developed by Pradeep with the Holiday Inn Express and Suites. This drainage easement was recorded with the North Church LLC Subdivision Section 1, Phase 2, Lot 10, in December 1, 2021. With this request and the approval of the current site plan under review, which has been submitted by Huddleston Steel, the storm drainage system is proposed to be located with the Holiday Inn Express and Suites development. In order to abandon the drainage easement, the Murfreesboro Engineering Department requires that the drainage easement should be subject to submission and recording of a subdivision plat that relocates the easement as proposed by the applicant. The drainage easement abandonment and the final plat recording should be done simultaneously. If this condition is placed on the approval, then city engineer does not object to the easement's abandonment. Staff further recommends that this request be subject to the following conditions in order to facilitate, facilitate the abandonment process. The applicant must provide to the city legal department all necessary documentation, including any legal descriptions and exhibits required to prepare the, and record the legal instrument. The drainage easement abandonment should be subject to the final approval of legal documents by the city engineer. I mean, sorry, city attorney. The applicant will be responsible for paying for any recording fees. A final plat dedicating the new drainage easement shall be submitted for review and approval, and shall be recorded simultaneously with or prior to the recording of the quick claim deed abandoning the existing drainage easement. The new drainage, drainage facility shall be constructed and passed inspection prior to the quick claim deed being recorded. And approval of this mandatory referral is subject to the approval of the accompanying site plan that was submitted simultaneously with this mandatory referral. Planning Commission will need to discuss this application and make recommendation to city council.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kerr. Any questions, comments regarding this mandatory referral?
I got a question, just to make sure I'm clear on this, I, I think I'm reading it right, but obviously what we're doing here, giving up this drainage easement, but they're going to have some, they're, they're going to have some drainage facility in place, right? They're just changing it, I mean...
They have a new site plan that has been submitted for the new Holiday Inn Express and Suites. With that site plan, they will show a new easement, dedicate a new easement with a recorded plat as well, that will show the new easement to replace this easement.
I guess my question was going to be kind of in terms of, if we set aside a specific area and space for that, and I know that area is terrible about drainage, you know, as far as water, especially the downstream piece of it, which is worrisome. I just want to make sure we all feel comfortable that, and maybe it's a Sam Huddleston question, but I mean, we all feel comfortable, they're going to be able to come up with some kind of...
Pipes.
Yeah, something to make that work.
Pipes.
All right.
Mr. Lenz, with the, with the conditions that we're, that we're recommending, we're not on the, on the hook for anything until, until if and when they do construct a, a replacement facility, and that's, and an easement is recorded for that, so...
Nope. All righty, just making sure, I just want to make sure we're not trimming anything, that we don't need to be trimming in that, particularly in that area. I think all that flows right to that spot that overflows Wilkinson Pike. If I'm, if it goes the other way there? Good, okay. All right, very good. I'm with for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Ms. Kerr. Next, we have a mandatory referral for the transfer to the city of a portion of the Shalom Farms Apartments tract along Stony Meadow Drive, and the recording of an access easement on it. Spence Creek Properties is the applicant. Good evening, Mr. Aguilera, how are you?
I'm doing pretty good, Chair Jones. Thank you, and I thank you, Planning Commission. And this mandatory referral, Planning Commission is being asked to consider a transfer, a portion of land to the city along Stony Meadow Drive and the Shalom Farms Apartments site. The property in question is to be combined with the adjacent city property that houses the water tank. I'm going to go to that exhibit real quick as well. You can see this here in the exhibit, that is the current site, Lot 1, houses the current water tank facility. Currently, the water tank facility has no frontage on a public right-of-way. Matt Taylor of SEC has requested for the transfer of land in conjunction with the water, Murfrees, the Murfreesboro Water Resource Department, so the water tank facility may have frontage on a public street. And to, of course, dedicate an access easement for the apartment development to have emergency access through the subject property. A final plat has been submitted and approved by the planning department for the purpose of creating one lot of record, re-subdividing the water tank lot, and dedication of new easements. The planning department's project engineer, Murfreesboro Water Resource Department, and the legal department have reviewed this request. It occurred there that this transfer of land to the city is acceptable. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this request to the city council, subject to the following conditions. If approved by city council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary for the legal department to prepare legal instruments for the transfer of the property. Legal instruments will be subject to the final review and approval of the legal department, too, that the applicant will also be responsible for recording these instruments, including the payment of the recording fee. And the third condition, that the plat creating the lot of record for the apartment site, Shalom Farms, and adding the subject area to the water tank lot shall be recorded. I'm here for any questions. It looks like SEC has left the building, so... I'll be here.
All right. Any questions?
So delayed.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
I make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We missed the joke over here.
Oh. Okay. Item D. We have a zoning application, clarifying the correct boundary of the property that was rezoned along Medical Center Parkway from M... from MU GDO 1 and GDO 2 to PUD CH GDO 1 and GDO 2, Clary Park PRD, Heinz Acquisitions LLC, applicant Mr. Blomley. Had to get up for this one, huh?
I did, I did. I wanted to use the telestrator, so...
All right.
I've been looking forward to this all week. So the developers of Clary Park, Clary Park, Clary, not Clara Park, Margaret Ann always corrects me, are wanting to record their subdivision plat for Section 1. In the review of that subdivision plat, we noticed a discrepancy in the zoning boundaries compared to what was included in the map that was included in the ordinance for the rezoning. And I'll show you the areas right here. So once we compare that area to the ordinance map, you'll see where it is different. So this is what they submitted in their pattern book. Clear, they intended for this area here to be part of the PUD zoning. It's actually kind of the flagpole portion of the flag lot of the apartment complex. And the Honey Locust Lane extension, they had proposed to include in the PUD zoning as well. Now I'll show you what was in the ordinance map. So you see here, there is no break in that CH zoning, and the Honey Locust Lane PUD zoning is not wide enough to match what they included in their materials. So what we have included is a map that shows the correct boundaries, thanks to Mr. Aguilera's excellent map-making skills, and here's that, Mr. Aguilera has left the building.
You could tell he was ready.
Yeah. So you see how there is a break, a break, the blue is actually what was rezoned to PUD. The MU is the old zoning from when, from the original map. So that blue area is the area that we are proposing to include in the PUD zoning. This isn't doing anything different than what was actually requested by the applicant when the zoning came through. This is just correcting a clerical error on the original map that was made to accompany that request.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Just a sign of a good job, Matthew.
We have no other staff reports or other business tonight?
Continuing education. Continuing education opportunities.
Right, done.
There's minutes on my agenda, down at the very bottom.
Those were approved at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, okay. I don't know why they're at the bottom of my agenda, sorry.
Anything else? We stand adjourned.